Young jerks, what's up jerks? Hope you staying cool, it's gonna get hot, it's gonna get really hot now, we're gonna have some hot weather coming in. It's getting hot in here on a Friday afternoon, I didn't expect to do much today, didn't expect much, I wasn't even sure if I was gonna do the Grace Curly Show, cuz it seemed like kind of a slow news week, and then some news broke that's like right up my, right up my alley, right up my alley, corruption, a sheriff getting indicted, getting arrested by the federal government, by the feds, and it's a cannabis, cannabis one, you know, I'm all about the cannabis, someone just posted, said is there any, hold on one second, here, will we read this one? But I just saw, where did it go, there aren't that many comments again, hold on. Yeah, here's one that's related, there's a couple like this, Nicole said, I wanna hear more about Mike's stories before Karen Reed, I recently learned here in Scotland, you can get cannabis prescribed, got my medical card up, lowest people's minds, most think it's legal, I saw a couple of your comments about that, it would take me too long to tell my whole story about cannabis, cuz I've been involved in cannabis, especially way back, that's how I kinda started my whole thing, it started for me with booking bans and trying to reform cannabis, it's funny how, and it ended up me going into media and doing this talk show, but we did decriminal medical and legal in the state of Massachusetts, and I was a big part of that, I was around throughout the whole thing, it would take a long time for me to explain the whole thing, but this today was something else, cuz to see more corruption coming out, it's unbelievable, and to see, like this guy, we'll put him up on the screen, who is this guy, this is the Suffolk County Sheriff, this is the sheriff in the biggest county basically in Massachusetts, this is Boston, this is downtown Boston, this is the sheriff, he's been the sheriff for a long time now, there's always been a lot of rumors and speculation about him, but he's, you know, mostly kept out of scandal for the most part, and this today though, to see that he was actually arrested, and then to read the allegations of what he did and how he did it, the first thing I came away with is this guy is a frigging moron, he is probably the worst investor ever, what a dumbass, if you're gonna risk your, if you're gonna risk your reputation, if you're gonna risk your pension and your job, and all the money that he's gonna lose now, cuz he's gonna spend a lot on lawyers. You don't, you don't do it for this, this is ridiculous, he lost money, without the extortion, he wouldn't even have broken even, and if you look at the interest rates and the inflation rate, he technically lost money, like you don't invest fifty thousand dollars and then just hope to get it back with some extortion later, like that is just, he is a terrible investor, if he had just done the legal thing, which I've been doing, and just invested it in straight, large tech stocks, like just, just pick the NASDAQ 100. I've done some stock review shows, you've seen the stocks I've picked, a lot of them are the large to midsize tech companies, just pick any of them, you would've made much more, you would've done a much better return than this fool did, risking his career, risking his pension, risking his credibility, risking his ethics, this guy is just a clown, what an idiot, he lost money on it, all he had to do is stick it in an index fund, S and P 100, bro, QQQ, that's all you needed to do, you would've been up huge, you would've doubled your money, you frigging moron, instead, you barely even made your money back with extortion, you had to extort it to get your money back, and now you're gonna lose a lot more, this guy is such a jackass, what he did, for people that don't know, I'll bring up the story, let's bring up the story, I just, I just laugh, this is why I left the cannabis space mostly, a lot of these companies wanted me to do things for them for money, and I just could not do it, I exposed them over and over again, and this is the chicanery that goes on in this industry, the stupidity, how stupid they are with their greed, when they're short sightedness, and this is why this industry is a mess, it's all bribes and kickbacks and scumbaggery. Let's bring it up, hold on one second. Come on, let's just, alright, here's the story from W HDH Channel 7 in Boston. Headline Suffolk County Sheriff Stephen Tompkins arrested in Florida charged with extortion involving cannabis company, by James Cutzes and Kimberly Bookman, now I will say, in the feds, in their press release, they don't name the cannabis company, but I know who it is, this is definitely Ascend Cannabis, which is also used to have as a CEO, I'm not sure if she's still the CEO, but they had another former sheriff, see how, see how the theme of this, they had another former sheriff, Andrew Cabral, as the CEO, and there, you could tell that this cannabis company, Ascend Cannabis, that they snitched on Tompkins, and basically Sheriff Tompkins, how he was working with this cannabis company, is through the sheriff's office. Let's read a little bit about this, Suffolk County Sheriff Stephen Tompkins was arrested Friday following an indictment by a federal grand jury on two counts of extortion. Tompkins, sixty-seven, this guy's sixty-seven years old, dude, you're making good bank, you can take your pension anytime, why are you shaking down this cannabis company, how stupid are you? Tompkins, sixty-seven of Boston, was taken into custody in the Southern District of Florida, where he will appear Friday morning before appearing in Boston at a later date. The FBI took Sheriff Tompkins into custody today for allegedly extorting fifty thousand dollars from the owner of a national cannabis retailer seeking to do business in Boston. And so for people that, you know, haven't followed every detail, I'm gonna cut in right there and just, basically this guy, this company Ascend, right, Ascend Cannabis, all the companies in Massachusetts have to come up with a community plan to help the community, to invest back into the community, and this group, Ascend Cannabis, decided to work with this sheriff of Suffolk County, to give jobs training, and to help prisoners and convicts in Suffolk County. So he was part of their plan, and he, it was a program that he was working with this dispensary group, now he wasn't an employee of this dispensary group, cuz he can't be, he's working for Suffolk County, it's basically a private public partnership, right? This is where public-private partnerships go wrong a lot of times, and this is a perfect example, you have to be above board on this stuff. Well, this company every so often had to get recertified by the state of Massachusetts, and had to put in paperwork in writing what their community plan was, and if it was working, if they were still working with the sheriff, if they weren't, they had to come up with another charity, so they would put Tompkins on the paperwork, but it seemed like Tompkins basically went to them when he found out that they were doing an investment, they were doing an IPO, they were basically gonna become a publicly traded stock company, and the IPO he wanted in on, and apparently he didn't have the rights to get in on it, so they let him in, they probably shouldn't have, they felt pressured apparently, he gave them fifty thousand dollars, he got in on the stock at a low price, the stock later went up, he was up big, he was doing well, he didn't sell the stock, he kept on to the stock, which is, the whole thing is so stupid, because if you know anything about stocks, there's records, it's like that's the problem, if he made a lot of money on this and sold it, he would've raised flags, it would've raised flags, it's like, I don't see how he thought he could get away with this, this is so stupid of him, so he held on to the stock, and then the stock, of course, crashed, cuz cannabis companies have not been a good investment, the market's been flooded, it's just not well-run, it's basically, these companies have had to leverage and spend all this money to even open, and the money isn't there when they actually open, so it's a bad investment, which I could've told them from the beginning, that's why I didn't invest in any cannabis companies, he lost his shirt, and then he went back to the company and said, I want my fifty thousand dollars back. And the company turned around and gave it to him, cuz they felt like he was threatening them, to extort them, that he wouldn't go along with what they needed on their license, which would've cost them way more money, so they gave him the fifty thousand dollars back, and then apparently, they made a phone call. So this guy is now looking at twenty years in prison for each charge, up to twenty years, three years of supervised release, and a fine of two hundred and fifty K, talk about a meathead, this guy could lose up to five hundred thousand dollars just on the fines, never mind the lawyers, never mind the lost work, because you know, eventually, the pressure's gonna come down, he's either not gonna get reelected, or he's gonna have to resign, I hope he resigns, I think everybody, every single politician in the state should be asking that this guy resign from his office right now. So that's what's going on with this sheriff. Oh, I guess I never put that up on, from HDH, let me put it up there and give them the proper credit, since I just read from their retired story, I thought it was on the screen, but this is from, some of what I quoted was from Seven News in Boston. Alright, so that's that, I mean, that was, it was fun to talk about today, on the Grace Curly Show, I didn't know what we were talking about, we talked about that, we talked about the ballot initiative earlier that happened last year, about basically auditing the legislature that hasn't happened, Dinah DeZoglio has spearheaded that campaign, and she's just trying to get an attorney to make sure that it is legal, and the AG's blocking it, and there's a lot of shenanigans going on at the State House, so it was great to talk to Grace Curly about a bunch of stuff going on in Massachusetts, again, on the Grace Curly Show, I heard on the Howie Carr Radio Network, I always enjoy that on Fridays, if you didn't get to check it out, check out the podcast, I linked it on our Twitter, it's also on our YouTube channel. So, yeah, that was fun today, it was fun to be on Grace Curly Show twice this week, it was amazing, felt like old times, lot to talk about this week with Proctor and the sheriff now. Now, there's something else I wanted to get into tonight, which is, it's fun, I haven't watched all of it, but what I saw, I just gotta tell you, this is California, usually I don't go to other, usually I like to cover Massachusetts, I have started to dabble a little bit in some other places, and this one just checked off all the boxes, it's basically, this is about police, it's about government, it's a government meeting, it's city council, you basically have public comment, which I love, I love supporting the citizens, and there's something going on in Simi Valley, California, and this is epic, when you see this city council hearing tonight, you're gonna enjoy this, this happened like a week ago, there's a lot of scandal, basically what happened is there's a bunch of, it looks like in a mall, a bunch of white dudes, right, who I think they're probably under the influence, but they're a bunch of not, never do wells punks, and they basically saw someone that they didn't like, they started beating him up, getting in a fight with him, and then they saw his friend who was black, and all the kids that were in the fight apparently, up to that point were white, and they ended up beating the crap out of the black kid, and said all kinds of racial shit, threw the kid in the dumpster, and it turns out one of the kids, his father was a cop. And so what you're gonna see at this hearing is a lot of things, number one, there's gonna be a lot of complaints about the police, there's gonna be some Black Lives Matter and racism claims in this, you can take it for what you want, I'm not gonna comment too much on that, the thing I'm commenting on is the violence, the absolute violence and the lack of accountability from, it seems like some of these parents, and the fact that this kid, one of these kids, the son of a police officer, did this, and then the morning of this hearing is making threats on voicemails, which you're gonna hear at this hearing, this is just a shocking hearing, you're gonna hear a lot, there's also some public comment from people about Airbnb's, they're having some problems with Airbnb's and partying, so there's several topics that come up in this public comment, I'm gonna let it all air, I'm gonna be in and out, I'm gonna be commenting on some of it, but just sit back, if you like the Canton Select Board meetings, you will enjoy this one, there's a Canton Select Board feel to it, you're gonna see at one point, the Chamber of Commerce lady gets up, and she basically says, these parents are doing the best they can, talking about the parents of the kids that did the assault, and she basically, you'll see, she reminds me of the McAlbert, she's very McAlbert-y, this is gonna be fun tonight, let's just kick back and enjoy it, it's not Canton, but it's something different, and I think that, I just wanna support the citizens, I always like to support the citizens when they come out and speak, they're concerned, let's watch it, let's give it a good, good listen to, and check it out tonight. And again, I'm gonna continue to probably cover this, this is, this is, it's interesting, I like to cover different things, and this just checked all the boxes for me. Again, this is Simi Valley, California, city of Simi Valley, and you can, you'll get the feel of it right from the beginning, cuz the mayor basically kicks it off, but I'm just gonna play the whole thing, if it's not loud enough, let me know, I'm trying, I will try to turn it up, here we go.
Thank you, we're going to call this meeting to order. Councilmember Ayala, will you please lead us in, oh, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself here, close, city attorney, can you please state the closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there's nothing to report out from closed session at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Ayala, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Everyone, please stand. Hand over your heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
I wanna know in the chat, should I stand when they do the Pledge of Allegiance, or is it rude to be sitting here watching, but first of all, I gotta just comment, Sarah, one of our moderators, member for thirteen months, she says, thirteen months flew by, chat loves the haircut, I'm loving it too, I think, I think my hairdresser to me finally like vibed on like the correct length and all that, I finally, I walked out of there and I was like, I'm feeling good, I like the haircut, I'm feeling like a new man, so I like it as just as much as they do, and I'm trying to keep up on all my stuff, like I said, I got a couple more things to do, I gotta get the vet, for Charlie, and I gotta get the new glasses, and I gotta return some cable boxes, but I'm doing really good, I'm catching up on a lot of stuff at home, including haircuts and things like that, so thank you so much, Sarah, in shock and horror, our moderator over here, thank you so much, Sarah, for everything that you do, and what does the chat think over here, should I, should I put my hand over my heart when I'm doing the national, the Pledge of Allegiance and all that, or should I just chill, is it okay if I sit down, what do you think? Do you really wanna look at me, cuz if I stand up, I realize you're getting Apollo Keefe look, you're getting Apollo Keefe view. That's why I sat back down, I was like, no, I don't know if I wanna do that, that's like, that might be a crotch view.
With liberty and justice for all.
Alright, they're done, good.
Thank you, roll call please. Councilmember Ayala?
Here.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Mayor Potem Judge?
Here.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Thank you. Before we go any further in the meeting, I have a statement I'd like to read. Before we begin tonight's agenda, I want to take a moment to speak directly to our community about the incident that occurred on August 1st at the Regal Plaza. Many of you have seen the videos circulating online, the violence involving a group of people in that parking lot was shocking, senseless, and deeply disturbing. Watching it as our city's mayor, a longtime Simi resident, and a mother who raised her child in this community, was heartbreaking. I want to thank the Simi Valley Police Department for their swift response, as for, as of... Please give me the respect to read my statement, thank you. As of today, four juvenile suspects have been identified and arrested for battery. The investigation remains active, and as additional information comes to light, more suspects may be identified, and further charges might be filed. Over the weekend, I was in regular contact with Chief Shorts, who assured me and all of us that the Simi Valley Police Department will continue this investigation with integrity, professionalism, and transparency within the bounds of the law. Additionally, PD is working closely with the Ventura County District Attorney's Office to ensure that those responsible are held accountable. I know this incident has left many in our community feeling angry, shaken, and deeply saddened, I feel the same. Let me be clear, violence and intimidation have no place in Simi Valley, we will not tolerate actions that threaten the safety, dignity, or well-being of anyone who lives, works, or visits here. As a community, we must stand together against hate, against fear, and against the kind of behavior that strips others of their sense of safety. If you have information that may help the investigation, I urge you to contact the Simi Valley Police Department. If you have questions or information, please contact Sergeant Rick Morton at 805-583-6950. We are committed to ensuring justice is served, and to doing the work necessary to ensure our safety is in our community, and I would just wanna thank you all for being courteous, thank you.
Let me just say, someone said, this is even better than Canton, I think it is, this is like, there, it depends, you know, cuz there have been some epic Canton Select Board meetings, this is up there, you're gonna see some good stuff tonight, it just gets better and better and better, it's kind of a slow start too, you'll see, but I just wanna play it all, we're gonna go through all of this, like I said, I'm gonna be in and out, I still haven't fed my dogs, I got some chicken wings in the oven, I'm gonna be multitasking, so I'll be in and out, but I'll be watching, I'll be watching the chat, and I'll be back too as well, but this lasts for a little while, and it's a lot, I liked watching what I saw, I haven't even seen all of it, so we're all gonna watch this together, this is gonna be something to watch.
Are there any items for agenda review?
There are not, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Call for the vote. The motion passes unanimously? Thank you. If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we can move on, thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item four, public statements. Since there are no public hearings under agenda item five this evening, agenda items four and six are combined, and the city council will hear all public statements under this agenda item four. Agenda item number four and six are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their car was submitted, to speak for this public statements item four, for a period of no more than two minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Madam Mayor, unless you have any comments, we can begin public statements.
Yes, please do. I will be calling three names at a time, so that you can, so that you'll know when you're next. The first three speakers, Lana Zukowski, Abigail Laredo, and Erica Ayala.
Hello, my name is Lana Zukowski, I am a Simi Valley resident, I was here last week in support of law enforcement, but today I am ashamed of the Simi Valley Police Department. What I saw on social media broke my heart, a gang of teens viciously beating a black boy and screaming the N-word, as they brutally punched and kicked him, they hit him with a chair and they put him into a trash can, this is unacceptable. Jonah Collado is Officer Collado's son, and according to the video, he thinks he's protected by the Simi Valley Police Department, he's on camera leaning on a police cruiser that same night, saying it's a joke, two of the boys have criminal records. Why were these hooligans not arrested immediately? Why did it take two days to arrest them? I plead with you to urge the DA to file hate crime charges. Also, I want to say that this behavior is learned at home, Sergeant Collado, shame on you.
Please keep the clapping to a minimum, so that the speaker has all of their time, thank you.
Please, guys, urge the Ventura County District Attorney to file hate crime charges, he does not have a good record of filing hate crime, or attaching hate crime charges to violent incidents, I will give you one example, a gentleman by the name of Paul was murdered on the corner of Westlake Boulevard and Thousand Oaks about two years ago, by a gentleman who screamed pro Palestine and hit him in the head with a megaphone, the DA was assuring our community that he was going to attach hate crime charges, which he did not, I do not want to see this happen again, hate crime charges need to be put on these individuals, I will not use the word people or gentlemen, and, as I said, parenting starts at home, this is a learned behavior.
Hi, my name is Abigail, and I'm here to speak on the incident that happened on August 1st, I'm extremely disappointed in the Simi Valley Police Department on this matter for their lack of urgency and their extreme leniency, it's really disheartening and shameful. Officer Collado also needs to be held accountable, as he has failed as a father for Jonah and failed as a protector for the community. As for the aggressors, they have put themselves in a position where they have limited opportunities to redeem themselves, to the figures with actual authority, get these aggressors off the streets, as they've proved, they've proven to be nothing but unremorseful, and if you give them the opportunity to be on the street again, then they will reoffend. And this, this is a hate crime, they should be persecuted and charged with a hate crime, because this is just unacceptable. In the reports, context needs to be given and not sugarcoated, lying by omission is still lying, and I'm asking by, I'm asking for transparency, and I'm asking for action to be taken, and I'm not asking for excuses, because at the end of the day, this should be as simple, actions have consequences, but where are the consequences? For Michael and the other victims, I hope you get the justice that you deserve, this will never be okay, and I'm here with you, if anybody here needs anything, then just reach out to me, I have nothing further to say, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Erica Ayala, and I'm a proud community member here of Simi Valley, I've worked here in the area, recently, I had the opportunity to be up here to get some recognition for some continued work I'd be doing in the city, I'm actually currently packing my boxes right now to move into Simi Valley from the San Fernando Valley, this situation that happened last week and was not okay, not just for a little boy, but for every mother that fears their kids leaving their doors at any given time. I'm not here to talk about the disappointment, because this happens in every city, and it happens with anyone that's of color, of a different color. I'm here to be part of the change, and I'm here to ask the city council to be part of that as well, bringing diversification, bringing the resources that this community needs to be part of the change, we do not do this work alone, we do it together, and we need to join forces, create the processes, because if the parents aren't doing it, then the schools need to do it, the city needs to do it, the parks need to do it, other people need to step in and give them the different shade of light that is need for them to see different. So I'm here to ask the city today to make that part of their mission, if you are gonna be entering the next year to make that be what you go on, be part of the change, be part of the resolution here, thank you for your time.
The next three speakers, Dexter Nunnery, Larkin Greding, and Michael Shaw.
Good evening, my name is Dexter, I am the founding director of a Ventura County organization called Project Fifty, we advocate for the black community, I wanna make something clear before I start speaking, is that the family in this situation has not contacted us directly, but as I said, we advocate for the black community, and I am here to let the city of Simi Valley know that this will not be tolerated, and I wanna echo the same things that the previous people have said, my time I wanna, I wanna give talking about racism and racist, racism is taught in the home, so whoever the parents of these kids are, you are raising them that way, and I'm telling you that reason, because I have kids of my own, they would not dare say some shit like this or get involved in it. So that's where, so that's where racism starts, in the home, we're not tricking anybody. So at the age of these kids, it's embedded in them, it runs through their veins, the hatred and the racism, and let me tell you about racists, what we saw on that video was exactly how racists act, they always come in groups, they're too chicken shit to fight by themselves, how many black people do you want us to bring to Simi Valley to make this And what we saw, what we saw, what we saw on that video is strictly a hate crime. And Ventura County has limitations and laws and rules around hate crimes, this one qualifies as one. This one qualifies as one. So if it's not a hate crime filed, you're not doing your job. And we don't want to hear those excuses in that conversation about working with the PD. Let's see, let's see it happen.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Larkin Greding. I have been a resident of Simi Valley for 22 years now. And as a member of this community, I'm very, very concerned of the safety of all other kids and adults in the area. As of right now, three of the attackers responsible for the hate crime, which it is a hate crime, no one can tell me different. Only one have been cited and released while letting others that were responsible get away. We have, we have videos from multiple angles, videos of them saying that they would do it again along with other threats of violence. I'm, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm terrified for my peers and angry for the victims in this situation. Why is one of the attacker's dads a cop in the force and why he, why has he had no repercussions so far? When he has a history of this harassment and deplorable behavior? Hayden Davey, Maddox Westfall, Harper Trejos, Nathan Elkins, Jonah Colato, the son of the cop on your police department who has said he would do it again. All of the attackers, none of which have been arrested again. They have smashed kids' heads into the concrete multiple times, spewing racist remarks and saying they rule the town. And you have done nothing but support that comment by allowing these violent criminals loose. In the videos, it clearly shows that it was a one versus nine kids, which the group of kids started. We demand transparency and justice. What will you do to address this wrong justice or wrongdoing? Thank you.
Be, before Mr. Shaw speaks, I really am going to ask you to keep the applause down. It, it's disruptive and it takes a lot longer to let all the speakers come up here. So if you could just kind of minimize it a little bit. I know you want to support comments and I'm happy with that. But if we can just keep it to a minimum, I appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I have to read because I, I can't look and get it out. Uh, first I want to say publicly again, I respect and admire each and every one of you for your public service. I also want to go on record that I have nothing against waste management. I think WM does a great job with the landfill. The landfills run professionally, they're all courteous, and the local management team's doing what the shareholders would want. My issue is with the lack of transparency and accountability by the city, specifically the city council. In 2022, the city negotiated a 20-year, $200 million trash hauler contract. There was zero public notification or input from the community before approval by the city council. How should something like that happen in a free and open process? Who instructed the city manager to negotiate the contract in the first place? Is there any record of the city council instructing the city manager to initiate the negotiations? Did the city council have a meeting that's not on record to set their priorities for what they wanted to see in the contract? There had to be a violation of the Brown Ha, Brown Act or perhaps some unsavory collusion of some sort. Why did, why didn't the city run the negotiations the same way they ran the landfill expansion? With, that was completely open and transparent? I'm asking the city council, oh, why is Simi get stuck with the landfill, the hauler operation? Let, you let, yet Thousand Oaks pays less for their trash service and gets $200,000 more for their charitable organizations? I'm asking this city council to cancel the 2022 hauler contract and put out a new RFP to allow the council and the public to review and comment. The contract should have never been negotiated in the back rooms of City Hall and all of you know it. Any council member who has nothing to hide should support a thorough investigation by the district attorney into the shenanigans that went on concerning the trash hauler contract. Thank you.
The next.
I want to say there's a few different issues in this town, in this city, actually. But isn't it interesting how a lot of the same issues come up in the different cities and towns that we cover? These government hearings, the trash issue, that's, that's an ongoing issue. The Airbnb issue is a, is a frequently, frequent one I see. But the lack of accountability from the, the police in the city council or the select board, depending on if you're in a city or town, in this case, it's the city council and the mayor. You'd see the same, you could see the same theme here where the mayor is trying to shut people up. Don't clap. What, which, Mayor, read the room. Read the room. Listen to your constituents. Maybe listen more and try to lead less in a situation like this until you're actually leading for your people. You know, telling them to, to not applaud. Maybe you should just ease up and, and not do that. All right, let's play some more. There's a lot more to come. It gets really interesting. The thing that gets me too is this, uh, the reason I wanted to cover this is you can see there's teenagers there, there's kids there that are being affected by this and they're noting what's going on. And they're seeing that these teenagers that did this assault are still threatening people. They're still threatening people and they feel like they're protected by the police, which they seem to be. There was no arrest originally. The police seemed to have been not honest and not transparent. That's why you even see people who were, like that woman that started off, she said the week before she was praising the police. There's a lot of that in cities and towns too where you see people who are back to blue and then something happens and they realize, wow, uh, there's something not right here. So you see a lot of this. And what you're gonna see in this is gonna get better. It's gonna, you're gonna see, you're gonna actually hear some audio. Some audio from, from the son of the police officer, allegedly. So let's, let's keep watching this. This is uh, it's kind of fascinating. This is again, Simi Valley, California happened, this, this city council hearing happened August 4th. So it's something that's been going, ongoing here. And some stuff happened even since then, this week in, in terms of the government. We could talk more about that and cover more, more of that going forward, but I want to get through this. I think it's about 40 more minutes of uh, public comment here. So let's see how long this lasts.
Next three speakers are Tara Gardner, Jamie Sanchez, and Jared Jessow.
I want to thank Laura too. Thank you, Laura.
My name's Tara Gardner. Um, I've lived in this community my whole life. And I wish to stand here today to say that I feel safe and that I trust the people that were sworn to protect us, but I don't. Because I've lived through uh, what it happens, what happens when uh, they look the other way. We're here because a young black man was violently attacked by a group of white teens. And one of them is the son of a cop. And what did they get? A citation for battery investigation. That's it. Not even handcuffs, not even a night in jail, just a piece of paper. And a reminder that if you're connected, you're protected. I know this.
Isn't this a common theme? If you're connected, you're protected. It reminds me of the McAlberts, doesn't it? And it's the whole thing too, uh, where you see victims of the police in other instances come out when there's new cases like this. It seems like this woman has been through some shit with this police department, which is not a shocker. We see that a lot. We see that a lot. When, when it, there's a high-profile instance, then other people who have been affected come out and they remind their public officials, hey, I've told you about this. I told you this was an issue and here we go again.
Yes, because I've been there. When I was 17, I was mob bullied and stalked. My home was vandalized over and over again. They spray painted my car with 187. Uh, death threat. They slashed my tires, keyed my vehicle, poured mustard and ketchup all over my mother's vehicle and then wrote F U Tara on the walls of my home. We called the police. We gave them everything, photos, video footage, names, and still they did nothing.
Wow, wow.
Until the day one of them lit an explosive and threw it under the motorhome that I was standing in. I thought I was going to die. We called the police again and again, they did nothing. Because the suspect denied it. It wasn't until my dad said that he was taking it to the city council that the police started to act. Not because they cared about justice, but be care, because they cared about saving face. A sergeant promised felony charges, but in the end, it was a slap on the wrist. Not attempted murder, not even close.
Miss, your time is now up. Thank you.
This breaks my heart.
Miss, your time is up, please.
Law enforcement picks and chooses where justice belongs.
Be respectful, everyone else did. Thank you.
Gaslighting is that, honey. And I'm calling you honey now because you're just a friggin rude public servant. You couldn't give that lady 10 more seconds? With what you just heard, with what happened to her? Come on. Be respectful. You're not respectful. You're not respectful. Disgusting. I'm so sick of these time limits on citizens. They, that's, they have the discretion. One thing, if uh, they're just talking about some public ordinance and everyone wants to talk about it, you got 100 people there. But for something like this, where this victim of this bullshit is telling you and you're, you're telling her to be respectful. What the? That's not leadership. Lady, you need to know when to shut up. Awful. What we see over and over again with these hacks.
Just as a little note, the green light comes on. No, no, you're good, you're good. Stand there. The green light comes on, that's your two minutes. Then the yellow will tell you you have 30 seconds. Okay? Thanks.
Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jamie Sanchez. I'm here today as a concerned member of our community to bring attention to a deeply troubling incident involving racial profiling, profiling that occurred right in our city. I have lived here all my life. I have served my country as a Navy veteran. This is, as much as I want to read what I have, I am very distraught. I, my son is extremely close to the victim that this happened to. This isn't an isolated case. It reflects a broader pattern that too many people of color experience daily, being viewed with suspicious, treated differently, or targeted simply for existing in a public space. That is not acceptable. I'm asking this.
Sorry to all the women out there. Hope I didn't trigger anybody. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have done that. Well, just emotional support. Laptop says, I am a woman who almost hit a man for calling her honey, calling me honey. But it's all about the context. It is about the context. She deserves it. But uh, that sounds bad too. But geez. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm trying. It just, she, she's cutting that woman down, that other woman down though, you know what I mean? So. All right, let's see how she handles this one. This one seems like she's uh, another one that has some experience with her, 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 her own child. Is afraid and connected to the victim and friends with the victim.
Council to do more than just acknowledge what happened. I'm asking for transparency and how these situations are investigated, for public data on racial profiling complaints, and for real training that addresses the root causes of bias in our institutions. We cannot fix what we refuse to name and we cannot move forward as a truly united community unless we are willing to face the hard truths. I hope today is a step in that direction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jared Jessow. And I'm here to speak about racially motivated attack that happened to my best friend. I've been with him through this whole process and it hurts to see the kind of hurt, hurtful people to turn out to be. He was chased down, jumped, and mocked for the color of his skin. This wasn't a fight. It was a hate-driven attack and it happened right here in our city. What makes it worse is that the people involved are now, now lying about what happened. Instead of taking responsibility, they're trying to protect themselves. That's not just dishonest, it's, it's dangerous. Those kids should be prosecuted and Michael Robinson should be able to get the justice he deserves. These ki, these kids' parents should discipline their kids because those kids learn the behavior from their parents and these parents should do better. When we ignore or excuse this kind of behavior, we're sending a message that racism is allowed to exist in our community. We can't let that happen. I'm asking this council to speak out and take better action and make it clear that hate has no place in this city. My friend deserves justice. Every person of color in this community deserves to feel safe. Thank you for your time.
The next three speakers, Paul Goodno, Kayden Kelsey, and Michelle Liddell.
So Mayor, city manager, council members, thank you for having me today. My name is Paul Goodno. I am a Simi Valley resident, a Simi Valley business owner for over 30 years. Almost 30 years, I'm sorry about that. And last year's Chair of the Board of Directors of the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce. Is that's why I'm here tonight to speak in strong favor of the proposed grant allocation of, on, in support on tonight's agenda. At the chamber, our mission is simple. We support a strong business community. Every program, event, and service we offer is centered around the goal, around this goal. And this partnership with the city is critical in helping us fulfill it. This funding is an investment in Simi Valley's economic vitality, workforce, workforce development, and community connection. Sorry about that. I should have done this from the beginning. We are deeply grateful for the past and future city's continued support of the chamber and truly value the partnership we've built. Together, we've created a model that many ci, other cities would envy, where government and business leaders work hand in hand to make our city thrive. Thank you for your time and trust and your cooperation. Have a good night.
Hello, I'm Kayden Kelsey. I'm a unhoused resident of Simi Valley. I have been harassed by these juveniles as well. And it is sad to see the fact that the police department failed to handle my case and something like what happened to Michael could have been prevented if the law enforcement in this town.
Feel so bad for this guy right here. This kid. He's shaking. Like people are getting up here and saying, oh, it's not racism. You could argue about the racism thing all day. I think if you're a white person, it's, it's, it's hard to say that racism doesn't exist. Let's just say that, let's just say it that way. So I, I'm not getting into that topic. This is about kids abusing other kids and getting away with it because of who they know. There's a white kid right here, as far as I can see. So it doesn't, it doesn't matter. Like I don't know why people get so caught up about the term hate crime and racism, because you're gonna hear a lot of that in this. There is a reality to it, definitely. But I'm not here to say what is or what isn't. This is violence. That's the big thing. There's violence and there's kids getting away with it because of who they know. And a lot of victims of it, like this guy. Let, let's hear what he has to say. This is the first time I'm hearing this. But just the way he's shaking right now. Tell there's something not right going on here.
Handled my case the way that they should have and held these juveniles accountable to their actions. I am not the first and sadly, I was not the last that these children have harassed. It got to the point where they have assaulted myself, my home, and my service animal to the point where I had to retire my service animal at three years old. I don't have him here with me today because he can't do his job because of these animals.
Oh my God.
The police department, um, several times when I had continued to be harassed after this incident, they gang stalked, these juveniles gang stalked me at my work. And they also threatened my life several instances afterwards. I brought it to the police department's attention on multiple occasions. I was told that they were involved in something bigger and they didn't need to obtain their names because they knew who they were. They also told me that. They also told me that these kids are all bark and no bite. They're bite now, aren't they? So if the police department did their jobs, none of this would have happened. And it is sad to say that this has been going on for years. And I am terrified that I will continue to be harassed by having the courage to speak up. Thank you, council.
Can you be a city councilor and not say anything? If they don't say anything right now, if this mayor doesn't say anything? Like, I don't care about your fucking rules and protocols. Like, you should be reaching out. You should be stopping the meeting and going over to that kid and saying, "Hey, I need to talk to you after this meeting. I need your phone number. I need a meeting tomorrow morning with you." Those service dogs, you know how much it costs to train one of those and get one of those placed? You're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. These kids ruined that dog, allegedly, if they did. That alone, that just makes me so angry. All right, let's watch more of this.
Okay, please, I'm gonna ask you all to keep your clapping to a minimum again. I know there's a lot of people here that are agreeing-
This friggin' bobble-headed idiot. This friggin' idiot. You are a disgrace, Mayor. You're interrupting. You're wasting time. Read the room, lady. Listen to what your constituent just told you. Have some friggin' human decency and compassion. You don't acknowledge him? If you're gonna interrupt the meeting, acknowledge what that kid just said. What's wrong with you? No wonder why your city's fucked up.
...with a lot of what's being said, and that's fine. But every time you clap, it kind of takes up more time. And we'd like to make sure everyone has their opportunity to speak in peace. Please be quiet in the back so our next speaker can move forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and City Council members. My name is Michelle Liddell. I am a Simi Valley resident, business owner, and the 2025 Chairman of the Board for the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight on behalf of the chamber to express our deep appreciation for the city's longstanding support and to voice our strong support for the proposed seventy thousand dollar allocation outlined in the MOU between the city and the chamber. Over the years, the city has been an invaluable partner in helping us fulfill our mission to support a strong business community. This collaboration has allowed us to deliver programs that not only benefit local businesses, but also uplift residents, connect leaders, and build community. We are incredibly proud of what we've accomplished together, and we are eager to continue this partnership moving forward. This funding is not just a line item. It's an investment in Simi Valley's economic vitality, workforce resilience, and civic engagement. As the city's official visitor center, the chamber welcomes travelers, distributes local information, and promotes Simi Valley businesses. Our biannual job fairs directly support both local businesses and local residents. These events foster economic stability and ensure that talent stays right here in our community. Our signature programs bring together business leaders, community members, and elected officials to exchange ideas, address concerns, and build real relationships. The Spring and Fall Street Fairs and the Fall La La Local Campaign drive vital traffic to our local businesses while creating opportunities for residents to come together and create community. The chamber is proud of the strong collaborative relationship we've built with the city, and we truly believe it's something other communities would be lucky to replicate. On behalf of the entire Chamber of Commerce, thank you for your trust, your partnership, and your belief in what we can accomplish together.
The next three speakers: John Lapper, Elin Eason, and Anthony Eason.
I think this is where it might start getting good.
Mayor Kavanaugh, I'm City Council. It is with disappointment that I must remind this council the many times I've reported the hate in Simi Valley with copies of inflammatory posts, memes, and comments, even by acquaintances of this council, the Simi Valley Police Foundation and Simi Valley Police Department. And I point out Peter Carubi, who is on the Simi Valley Police Foundation board and was somehow the Volunteer of the Year for Simi Valley. Yet I can think of no more individual in this community who has expressed rage and hate towards some disenfranchised in our community. Also, I've mentioned T.J. McInturf in the Simi Valley Community Forum No Rules Simi Strong page, the most hate-toxic group in Simi Valley. And of course, no action, no replies to emails or public statements. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, Simi Valley has a reputation problem that has been earned over the years and certainly still exists today. I can only ask for an independent investigation that is transparent and accountable to the residents of Simi Valley, especially with the video with a youth parading around a Simi Valley PD patrol car. This I'll try to make quick. At the July twenty-first Simi Council meeting, tensions did indeed run high in the council chambers between the anti-Ice and pro-Ice protesters. However, after the initial ten public statements, the agenda was to move on to two public hearings, which clearly would have diffused the stir in the chambers. As some were leaving, one woman yelled, "Go back to your trash country." The gentleman responded, "I'm an American citizen, and I live here." The woman, who also caused a commotion outside the city hall before the meeting, continued to be a disruption. There were eight Simi Valley PD officers present in the chambers. A couple came to her. Instead of removing her, the Simi Valley PD stood there talking to her. Mayor Kavanaugh then decided to clear the chambers, requiring three hundred people to exit, which was a larger disruption.
Thank you.
Why did the Simi Valley PD not remove her?
Good evening. My name is Elin Eason, and I have been a Simi Valley resident and homeowner for over forty-one years. I am-
Let me just say, there's a lot of issues in this city, apparently. And there's a lot of history. Apparently, there's a lot of history of it being somewhat racist. It has a reputation, apparently. There's also issues with what you see in the community on the different political sides, on ICE and all of what's going on in the country is also happening here. So there's a lot of tensions on a lot of issues, and people are all coming out of the woodwork for this one to speak. I'm gonna air them all, every single one of these, because I think it's good to have the public comment, whether you agree with them or not. I'm looking forward to, there's a Chamber of Commerce lady that I'm looking forward to. She's gonna be fun. She's gonna get booed. She's gonna get heckled. There's also the kid. There's a kid that's gonna have the the audio of the voicemail from the police, allegedly the police officer's son that did the assault, threatening people. Wait till you hear this. There's a lot more to this, so we're just gonna continue to play it. I'm gonna step out for a quick second again, but I'll definitely be back. There's a lot more coming.
opposed to all short-term rentals in Simi Valley. STRs should be banned in Simi Valley-
Again, this is another issue they're having in the town with Airbnbs and people partying, having party houses, and a lot of communities deal with this. So this is another issue in town that people are speaking on. So I'm gonna air it, too.
as they are in our similar neighboring cities of Moore Park, Camarillo, and Ojai. They are also banned in Fountain Valley, Santa Ana, Garden Grove, Irvine, Yorba Linda, Costa Mesa, Redondo Beach, et cetera. Simi should follow the lead of all these cities. Simi is a neighborhood community, and it is not a vacation tourist location. Unlike your staff report suggests, we are not like Big Bear Lake, or Lake Elsinore, or La Quinta, nor will we ever be. Did the city make any effort to actually speak with neighbors of existing STRs and see how residents actually feel? If you ban all STRs, you could determine what amount to fine homeowners who advertise existing or new STRs. Also, all the STR internet sites, such as Airbnb, Verbo, HomeAway, et cetera, could be notified of the ban in Simi and instructed not to post any listings of houses in our city to comply with the new municipal code. STRs provide a way for non-local property owners to make as much money as they can, with no regard for any of the residents and neighborhoods. STRs also reduce housing availability in the midst of an already existing affordable housing crisis. Please ask yourself, how would you like a short-term rental right next door to you? Do the right thing, ban all short-term rentals before they destroy our safe neighborhood community of Simi Valley. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anthony Eason, and I live in Simi Valley. First, I want to say that I favor a ban on all short-term house rentals in our city. I don't want the prospect or the possibility of having a hundred different neighbors in a year based on a minimum stay of three days at an STR. I have reviewed the staff report provided on Simi Valley's website. As I see it, the city really only has two alternatives. One, to ban STRs in keeping with our family residential community standards, or two, regulate them. Inaction or doing nothing is not an acceptable alternative. Make no mistake, short-term house rentals are businesses. In our city, they are non-regulated businesses. Actually, according to staff's report, there's at least an estimated one hundred non-regulated businesses operating in our city. Why should our city allow these businesses to operate without a city business license? Also, why aren't STRs addressed in Chapter Seven of the municipal code? From a cost perspective, banning STRs makes the most sense. Implementation and enforcement can be whatever the council would like it to be. It doesn't have to be the only options offered here by staff. Our neighboring city, Moore Park, deals with STRs differently. They use no vendors as they feel that is not needed. They handle violations of their code as they are reported by residents. Why can't our city do the same? Pass municipal code banning STRs that includes fines for violations? Notify rental agencies that they are banned in our city and deal with violations as they are reported by affected residents. That would seem to be a fair and economical way to handle these. Sometimes the simplest answer to a problem makes the most sense. Thank you.
Next three names, please. The next three speakers: Joseph Alfano, Austin Maena, and Avery Estelle.
Hello. My name's Joseph Alfano, and I was raised in Simi Valley. I was at the last city council meeting. I'm here to speak to you, the city council, and more importantly, the people that elect you. Most of us are here because a hate crime was delivered a citation. That's unacceptable and racist. But let's be honest, at least through my entire thirty-two-year-old life, the performance of this entire city government has been unacceptable and racist. Mike Judge here is famous for his antics online from 2020. Want to Google it? Septic Tank Mike Judge. It's a fun one. Their reputation for a reason. When the police protect their own and their racist kids aren't punished, the folks on this council in front of you are responsible for their accountability. In the end, we demand it because, in the end, the people accountable for this are you, city council. The tide of justice might be slow. You might be elected for twenty years before it catches up to you, but at the very least, your legacy will remember you as for what you didn't do.
Okay, we've asked multiple times to keep the applause down. Please do that. I don't want to have to empty the chambers like we did at the last meeting. So, we're not afraid. I'm not gonna respond to the comments from the public. We're here to listen to you, to take your turns. Please be polite to everybody else. Thank you.
Shut up, lady. Oh, my God. She's gonna clear the chamber. Aren't you so supportive of your constituents and your city? Really, lady? Why don't you listen more? Listen. Stop talking.
Young man, you're first.
Hello, my name is Austin Maena. And just hearing about what happened at Regal sounded like something that was a hundred years ago, but it happened three days ago. I deserve to feel safe in my city. Mike was just a friend of mine. This could have happened to me. And all those thugs, Jonah Collado, Hayden Davy-
Think about this, too. Think about this. These are young people who are speaking up, who know all of these individuals. And she's shutting them up, and it happened just a couple days ago. It's disgusting.
Maddox Westfall, Nathan Elkins, and Harper Trejo were let to go freely. Had they been black, they might have been shot or arrested instantly. Those boys committed a hate crime, one of the worst ones I've ever witnessed in my life. And they were allowed to go freely, and then you have the police make a statement, a lie, saying they arrested four juveniles. They only cited three, and they were let go freely right that way. And they turned themselves in. And Jonah Collado, the son of Officer Collado, is allowed to just go freely? And he said he would do it again. He has no remorse, absolutely none. Those boys, I wouldn't even call them boys. They're thugs. They're monsters, evil, such evil people. And I can't believe we have the city just not protect us, no justice. Sad.
May we have the next speaker, please?
No comment. Leadership from this mayor and the city council.
Hello, my name is Avery Estelle, and I'm the president of Simi Valley High School's Black Student Union and an alum of Township and Valley View. Throughout my schooling in Simi, I have been a victim of racial prejudice, racism, by some of the same perpetrators, Maddox Westfall, Hayden Davy, Jonah Collado, Nathan Elkins, that a young black student named Michael Robinson faced last Friday. Chief Charles Stephen Shorts, an acting sergeant in arms. Racism is an ever-present and especially present in the town of Simi Valley. Hate crimes cannot continue to be swept under the rug. On behalf of the black student body of Simi Valley, we demand justice for Michael Robinson and every other person who has been victimized by this mob of white, privileged men with access to the same system in charge of prosecuting them and protecting their victims. In blatant reality, if the circumstances of these events were switched, if one white child running for his life from a mob of black men had been chased, beat, and spewed racial slurs at, and that had been recorded, this town would be on fire. Charges need to be filed, arrests need to be made, and no young black man would be safe or protected in his own by officers if it was his doing. A hate crime is defined by the Department of Justice as a crime motivated by bias against race, color, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, or disability. This was a hate crime, a crime motivated by bias against race. Emmett Till's mother left the casket open to let the world see what they did to his boy, her boy. The world has seen what they've done to this boy, and we now demand action. Martin Luther King and Malcolm X were both civil rights pioneers for very different ways. Choose which one you want. The casket is open. It's your move.
May we have the next three speakers, please?
She was good.
The next three speakers are Terri Daniel, Ken Hurst, and Elizabeth Lindskog.
Good evening. My name is Terri Daniel. I am a voter. I am a teacher. I am a mother. I am a wife, and I am a citizen of this city. I commend the young people, the young black people, who have had more courage in this room than many of the adults in this room have had tonight. And here's the TLDR- And here's the TLDR. What happened on Saturday is a hate crime, and I urge you to ask the DA to investigate and prosecute it as such. If the roles were reversed and it was a group of black boys, we all know they would be arrested immediately or worse. Don't offer your community empty placations. Take action. As for Sergeant Colado, I request a review of his conduct. My husband and I moved to Simi Valley in 2018 because of its reputation of being a safe place to raise a family. With the growing prevalence of graffiti in our neighborhoods, car and home thefts on the rise, and now gang-based racially motivated violence against a young black man happening at a movie theater, it's safe to say you are dropping the ball on keeping Simi residents safe. I urge you to do more gang prevention, intervention, and to invest more in making sure our youth have happy, prosperous futures. When I take my kids around Simi Valley, we're met with a chorus of, oh, how cute! How precious! They're adorable! I'm not-
People are bringing up what happened in Cincinnati. That was awful, too. That was disgusting. Like, for me, I don't, I don't care what color people are. Violence is horrible. What they did to that woman, just totally disgusting. In, in my angle always on this, is how does the government and police react? I, I don't think the government or police screwed up Cincinnati. If they did, let me know. If there's an outcry, if, if they didn't charge the right people and all that, then I'll, I'll be covering that city council hearing, too. It's the violence, and, and especially in this case where these kids think they're untouchable because of their connections. And it's clear there's a pattern, and it's ongoing. And it reminds me of the McAlberts, it does. It reminds me of the McAlberts. So for me, I, I'm not so much caught up in the race stuff. Like, I think there is an element of racism here, clearly. But that's not why, like, I'm covering this. For me, it's about when people in power get away with bullshit, especially violence, because of who they are. Because they're protected because they're connected. Anytime there's a protected because you're connected, I'm interested. That's my thing. If, if that's going on in Cincinnati, in that case, let me know. I'll, I'll be, I'll cover that, too. Like-
Not naive, and I know a day will come when my kind, generous, loving, beautiful, capable, smart, strong, resilient babies will stop becoming precious in the eyes of a dark pocket of our society whose members are uneducated-
I, I totally respect this calm and poetic justice. As a black man, I have to care, right? It's, it's easy for me to say it doesn't matter to me, right? Because I always get preferential treatment. It's true. I know that. I know there's some, like, where, the business I've been in, financial advisor, I, I had some black colleagues, and I think it was harder for them. Because some people don't trust a person based on the skin color. And also, as a dog walker, even. I know that some of my customers, they trust me because of my skin color. That, it's just reality. So I, I get that. I can never truly get it, though. I know it, you know? I know, I know I'm a white guy, so. That's why I don't like to talk about that stuff generally, because it's like, it's not comfortable, especially if you do it on video, right? I'm, I'm a white guy, I know it. But for me, the easy thing for me to cover, what I like to cover, is when people are being protected because of who they are, who, who their connections are. And, and this is a perfect example, I believe, of it. Where it's right in your face. Like, this, wait till you hear this video. There's, there's more coming. Wait till you hear the, the voicemail that apparently this kid left. All right, let's, let's get into this more.
Bigoted, small-minded people whose sense of self-worth is derived from belittling those who exceed their small standards of who should reign superior.
I have no idea if that happened. I'd, I'd like to see if that happened. If it did, let me know. If, if there's a city council hearing, I'll have to look that up if that actually happened. I'm not sure. If it is, that's a disgusting statement. No one deserves to get beat like that.
Your time is now up, but thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Ken Hurst. Thank you for having me today. I would like to request that the council direct the Simi Valley Police Department to respond to abduction calls. Please, would you put this on an agenda of a future meeting so that we could talk about it? I understand from talking with a Simi Valley police officer that when they receive a 911 call for an abduction, that they, they call the Department of Homeland Security, and if DHS confirms ICE is in the city, Simi Valley Police is done. To my mind, that is an unacceptable response. We have reports from around the nation of criminal elements, donning masks, and being up to mischief, including abducting people. How do we know that the people who are, the people that, what's going on now are ICE? They should respond. They should ascertain that it is in fact ICE. They should ascertain that they are not using excessive force. We have witnessed excessive force being used. And they should make sure that they can articulate at that time a reasonable basis for the detention in, in keeping with the existing TRO. In addition, Simi Valley Police, in my opinion, should be enforcing reckless driving provisions. I have witnessed ICE agents driving recklessly within Simi Valley. They almost caused an accident when I was watching. Someone's going to get hurt if we don't crack down on this. They drive around without license plates on. They're allowed to break rules if it's necessary for the performance of their duties. Driving around without a license plate, I can see no reasonable reason why they need to do that, other than avoiding accountability, which is unreasonable. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say good evening, but given the circumstances, it hasn't been such a great evening for me and for many people in this city. My name is Elizabeth, and I was born and raised in this city. I'm a law student, and I've been a substitute teacher for many of the kids in this city and in this school district. Much of what I wanted to say when I came up here has already been said, so I want to leave the members of this city council with just a few things. The first is, I will be the first to say that I appreciate the statement you made earlier specifically that you'd be working with the DA. I understand that there is a portion after this where you can respond to public statements. And I would like a response on whether or not you will be pushing for an investigation or pressing charges for a hate crime. The second thing, and I know this both from my experience in the community over these past few decades I've been alive, but also from substitute teaching and having intimate conversations, and by intimate, I mean, you know, I've been having conversations with these children. There is a racism problem in Simi Valley. And one thing I can say absolutely for certain is that when it comes from children, there is a problem much deeper than the individual. And that's something that I really, really wish for everyone to be considering and making plans to combat. I've heard some people defending the usage or the, the usage of language and the behavior of these children that attacked Michael. I've been seeing them defending the use of the N-word because every child uses it these days. I'll end with this. I have never, in any of my time at school, heard someone say the N-word and gotten away with it.
May we have the next three speakers, please? The next three speakers are Rupman, Judith McMahon, and Jac Moseley.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Rupman. I'm a lifelong resident of Simi Valley. I'm also a last-year law student, and I work with the Public Defender's Office in Los Angeles County. A pregnant woman attacked, a gun pointed at a member of the LGBTQ community, a Palestinian man dragged out of his home by police, and a black teenager beat while a group of 30 white teens watch. What do all of these things have in common? They've all happened in your city in the last three months. Mayor Kavanaugh, shame on you for not mentioning that this was a hate crime in your opening statement, for not failing to continue, continue to fail to condemn racism in this city for as long as you've sat on the dais. And Mayor Pro Tem Judge, not sure if you're awake right now, but we have not forgotten your racist and Islamophobic remarks. And we, the people, know that you're eyeing that, eyeing that mayoral seat. And we, the people, will not allow you to have it. I ask you, Councilmember Ayala, you're new here. You have the opportunity to convince your fellow council members to condemn racism in this city. City Attorney Algeria Ford, your website touts that you were a civil rights attorney in the past. Use that knowledge and advise your council members to condemn the racism in this city and to advise the DA that this was a hate crime and to move accordingly. We, the people, will not let you forget. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. There's a lot of energy going on tonight, so I'm going to try to be as brief as I can. My name is Judith McMahon. I'm a licensed clinical social worker in town. I come from New York, as you can tell by my accent, and I did work with gang members in the jail. I'm also a board member of Simi Valley Women's Club, and we have a statement to make that we absolutely detest this behavior that happened on Friday night with those juveniles. And my question is, maybe you can figure it out another time with the police department, but I believe strongly, because of my experience in New York City, that you need to have a gang intervention specialist come in here. I don't care how much it costs, it's going to be worth it. There needs to be education in the school, education in the home, and definitely a change of heart. If it hasn't happened yet, it looks like it's not happening now. Something has to change, and our statement is that something has to be done, and we will not put up with this behavior anymore. We will follow this case as closely as we can, and we will speak out again if we need to.
Next speaker, please.
Speakers here, people who care about their city.
Good evening, council. I'm here for Agenda Item 4, for the short-term rental. Speaking for my family and many residents in my neighborhood that are unable to attend. We've been dealing with Simi Valley, and there's, this is open public comment, so people can speak on whatever they want. This was earlier, I believe, on Monday night after an incident, I believe, happened on Friday night. So there's been some violence here. There's been a lot of ongoing issues in this city, a lot, for a long time, apparently, a lot of scandals. And there's also some issues with Airbnbs and, and all of that. So this, this gentleman's going to speak about the Airbnb. I think the next two speakers are Airbnb, and then it gets, it's going to get juicy. There's more teenagers coming up. And one of the teenagers plays the audio. I believe it's a voicemail or a video, something that the son of the police officer left, and it is very threatening, and it's eye-opening about what's going on here. You can see that there's an issue. It seems like, it's almost like a white gang here, or maybe a white gang issue. These teenagers beat this black kid up pretty badly, a bunch of them. And there's video of it, and there's racial epithet, they threw him in a garbage, and I guess this kid is really the nicest kid. And the reason why they picked him out is they had a problem with another teenager. And they were beating him up, and then the, the friend showed up and they decided to, they knew he was the friend, so they decided to attack him, too. The impacts of, of short-term rentals in our neighborhood for the last year. We, we've lived in what was once a pretty quiet, family-oriented bedroom community, but recently we've been overtaken by just one single home in the neighborhood. That is advertising parties and backyard events and the use of their home for a cost. It's brought a lot of police activity, vandalism in the neighborhood, and quite frankly, just unbearable place to live, specifically on weekends. Weekends are supposed to be enjoyable for us and our families, and now we're indoors, you know, basically hiding from the potential threats of violence.
So this guy's talking about Airbnb. There's been a lot of party houses, apparently. And you know how it gets when they have these party houses. Airbnb is fine, I don't have an issue with it, but I think it does need to be regulated. I think it had, some of these owners are very irresponsible, especially knowing there are neighborhoods with, you know, residential neighborhoods. So this guy's speaking about that. I just wanted to stop it for a second and note KK, the comments coming in. A lot of the comments today, too, in chat, I, I appreciate you all, because I love, some of you don't agree, and everyone's being civil, and there's not a lot of nastiness, and you're all getting to say your piece, which I like. KK said this, "I really appreciate the teens and young adults who were terrified but speak anyway." And that's why I wanted to play this tonight, because I could see it. I, I haven't watched all of this, but I watched a good portion of it, and I saw a lot of teenagers that I want to support. They're speaking up, they're, they're being brave, but you could tell some of them are scared. We've seen some of them even shaking. So this is, that's why I wanted to play this tonight. Great comment, KK. I want to thank everybody in the chat, our moderators and all of you in the chat, speaking your truth and, and not being nasty about it, even when we don't agree with each other on everything.
Vandalism, small events have taken place where people are checking handles, vehicles, and disrupting the neighborhood. With that, there's blasting, you know, of vulgar music, streets are flooded with out-of-towners, blocking driveways, hydrants, safety violations, vomit on the streets, driveways, you name it. It's been, it's been quite the last year. During our pursuit of finding a resolution, city council sent us here to speak for this item, being that there's no municipal code that speaks to this specific situation. Chapter 5, Section 15, 33, 30, parties, all those things are all noted, but they do not speak specifically to a way the city can approach handling this situation. So I'm asking that a moratorium or regulations or either the, the complete denying of short-term rentals be made. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers, John Burns, James McGillis, and Leo Pready.
My name is John Burns. I've been a resident of Simi Valley for 65 years. I live near Joe, who just spoke. And this house, they advertise online, party rentals in their backyard. Sometimes there's 100 cars in the neighborhood, sometimes 150 cars in the neighborhood. There's broken bottles, trash left all over the streets, because the people that come to parties are not part of the families that are having the party, they're just renting the house out. I was walking my dogs one day, just picking up trash along the street, that these people that don't care because they don't live here. I've seen teenage girls, they honestly look like prostitutes that one day leaving the house. I'm saying they were, but maybe it's because I'm old, you know? But it's just the whole, the, I thought the loud music was the people behind me. It turns out it was two blocks away from me because it was so loud. So I think something needs to be done. It's, it's, I guess you call it a short-term rental by the hour, or by the day, or whatever you want to call it, but something needs to be done about it to clean up the neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Burns, can you provide what neighborhood it is that you live in?
This is the Italian track. This is right off Madera Road.
Great comment here. It's not always that way. Most owners don't do that, for obvious reasons. They don't want their properties trashed. I know some Airbnb owners, they don't do that. The biggest party I've ever seen at the Airbnb that I know from a friend in town, it was like a graduation party with the family. It's like a family graduation party, or like a family bridal party, that type of thing. Nothing crazy, but that's kind of the limit on, like, responsible Airbnb owners. Nothing crazy, but that's kind of the limit on like responsible Airbnb owners. And Airbnb, I believe, does discourage it. They don't want like a free-for-all type parties that I don't think, I think it's against their Terms of Service, but there are some that do it. They definitely do do it. So it's always like anything, one or two ruin the whole batch, right? So I think that's why there needs to be some type of slight regulation on this shit. And I don't blame people for being upset. I wouldn't want to live next to it, you know, especially if they're crazy parties and drunks and peeing in the street and all that, you know, and fights, especially the violence that comes along from alcohol.
The street is Genoa, the problem is.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is James McGillis, and I'm a resident of Simi Valley. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today regarding a matter that deeply affects the character.
I just want to, this was such a great comment, Robin S., and I want to thank you specifically for not letting me let this slide, because, you know, this was such a great moment here to note the difference between, now, I think these property value, property owners who are complaining about these Airbnbs have a valid complaint, and I think they should be heard, and I'm glad that someone in the City Council, the mayor, whoever just spoke, wants to speak to them and acknowledge them and get to the bottom of it and find out where they live. But jeez, how do you do that for a property owner like that, but you don't do it for the kid who told you about what they, what these punks did to his dog? You don't do it to any of the victims. You don't acknowledge any of them. You don't ask for their information, but you do for the property owner. Robin S. says, "Wow, they seem to care about the prostitutes and ignore the poor shaking guy." Exactly, that guy specifically. There were some others too, that other woman. It's amazing that they didn't acknowledge any of them. Double standards, and that's the problem when they make these stupid arbitrary rules. We don't acknowledge, we waited, and then they break their own rules. And it'd be one thing if you broke the rules for the thing that everyone, that you have everyone amped up about the most right now. But you don't. You do it for the Airbnb guy, which I think is valid, but you should do it for the other folks too, especially the real victims here, the people who are telling you they're scared out of their minds. Dude had to give up his service dog. He had to retire the dog. You didn't even, no interest in that. Very telling. All right, no more applause, no more interrupting. I'm going to play a little more here. I'm going to try to take a break so I don't interrupt every five minutes, because I want to get to this good part where you finally get to hear the voicemail.
... and well-being of our community, namely the proliferation of short-term rental properties in our city. I'm here to express my strong opposition to the continued and unchecked operation of short-term rentals within our neighborhoods. While I understand that these rentals may offer certain economic opportunities and convenience for travelers, I believe the negative consequences far outweigh the benefits. First, the increase in short-term rentals has contributed to a significant reduction in available housing, long-term housing for residents. As more properties are converted into short-term accommodations, the supply of affordable, family-oriented properties is diminishing, driving up prices and exacerbating our housing crisis. Second, the transient nature of short-term guests often undermines the stability and cohesion of our neighborhoods. Residents who have lived here for years suddenly find themselves surrounded by unfamiliar faces with little chance of building relationships or maintaining a sense of community. The constant turnover can erode the trust and neighborliness that are vital to a thriving city. Additionally, there are well-documented concerns regarding increased noise, traffic, parking, congestion stemming from properties used as short-term rentals. These issues disrupt the peace of residents and in their own neighborhoods and place additional burdens on city resources and enforcement agencies. Finally, the presence of short-term rentals can impact the safety and security of our streets. With a regular influx of strangers, it becomes more difficult for residents to identify and respond to suspicious activity, leaving our communities more vulnerable. I urge the council to take decisive action to regulate or restrict short-term rental properties in our city, protecting the availability of long-term housing, preserving neighborhoods, stability, and safeguarding the quality of our life for all residents must remain our high priority.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
I live next door to a short-term rental.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, City Council. My name is Leonard Pready. I live at Granville Avenue, not too far away from here, and I too came here to talk about the short-term renting. One of the reasons I left the San Fernando Valley 30 years ago was because of density and the lack of organization as far as their neighborhoods. You know, we're not a one-horse town anymore. There are motels, there are hotels people could stay at. You know, these neighborhoods were designed to be bedroom communities. They're designed to be homes, you know, for kids to play in and for kids to be safe in. My kids are grown, but there's next families coming in, you know. I can't see regulating it. You'd have to make it impossible for it to be, it would have to be banned. You can't really regulate something like this in a neighborhood, in a community that was not designed for it. You know, it reminded me sort of the mosque that they wanted to build. It's a good project in the wrong place. You know, I understand people need a place to stay. We have motels, we have hotels. They're not, you know, staying out in the woods. I can't see why we're going to go ahead and change an established 40, 50-year-old neighborhoods just so somebody can make an extra buck. I want everybody to be successful, and I don't mind somebody renting their property or leasing it, but when you come for short terms, people are in for a few days. You heard some of the horror stories that these people are talking about. I haven't experienced that, and I would not probably react very well to that in my neighborhood. I worked very hard to buy that house. So I would like for you people to ban this, not restrict it, not regulate it, not allow it. It's not designed, the neighborhoods weren't designed for that, and we got plenty of places to put people. Thank you for your time.
May we have the next three names, please? The next three speakers, Jared Lawrence Housky, Audra Herrera, and the Simi Youth Baseball.
Hello, my name is Jared Lawrence Housky. I'm from Moore Park, Moore Park, California. I'm here to represent the Moore Park College Football Team. We don't stand for this. We don't stand for racism. Our coaches have instilled into us that this is unacceptable for anybody. We shouldn't be hating, slandering, disrespecting based off of color. That's God-given. We are all God's people. We are supposed to live in harmony. This is pain to the community, pain to the families that we don't need to see. It's pain all around, and it's negative energy in the city. I live in Moore Park, right down the street. We don't need this spreading. This is hate. It spreads like wildfire, and we know that. Coaches say this word that they were using is the most demeaning and hateful word that we can use against colored people. We need to be better. We need to work against this. We need justice, something that we don't get often, and it pains me to see justice not be given. So today, take this word and think about it. It's unacceptable. It really is. This is coming from a community that believes it is unacceptable, and we ban it. We don't allow it. We don't even play the music that has the words in it. No cursing involved either. We got to keep things clean around our streets, and recently, we've done a very poor job at it. So I hope that y'all will listen, and we can move forward with this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Audra Herrera, and I'm a new resident to Simi Valley. Grew up in Moore Park with my brother Jared Lawrence Housky, who just spoke. When I had my son, when I birthed him and bathed him and loved him, a simple truth hit me, that every human, every grown person to the youngest person in this room, everyone was and is someone's baby. And all our children deserve safety, well-being, and the opportunity to live beautifully. That was not Michael's experience this past weekend, and although I don't know him or his family, he is my son, our son, and he deserves to be shown that we all care for What the attackers did was a hate crime, and being children too, for their sake, I hope that they are appropriately reprimanded because we know that this was an act of violence, an act of pain, and to go unchecked and unaddressed, I fear for their future and the effects they will have on their and future communities if not shown the error of their ways today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, when I told Janelle to come up here and speak, I didn't know we were going to be this busy tonight, so, but thank you for waiting.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and council members. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share about our team, but I do recognize there are bigger, more important issues, so I'd like to waive the rest of my time and allow others to speak. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, may we have the next three speakers, please? The next three speakers, Richard Holloman, Dustin Snyder, and Gabe Turan.
It's a tough day to speak. Mayor Kavanaugh, City Council Members, City Manager Argurite, City Attorney Ford, thank you for your time. I am, my name is Richard Holloman. I have been a Realtor in Simi Valley for 37 years, and I'm a certified real estate expert by Ventura County Superior Court. I am here to speak against short-term rentals today. I believe they should be banned, not regulated, not anything else. They should be banned, and I really feel that it's your opportunity to take advantage of that. Simi Valley is a rural neighborhood community. Airbnbs do not belong here in Simi Valley. A neighborhood community is a place for, is not a place for a business, is not a place for a hotel. Homeowners deserve to know who their neighbors are, not having people come and go every couple of days. It's your opportunity to take advantage of this and ban short-term rentals. Other cities around Simi Valley have ruled against short-term rentals, and I urge you once again to take their lead and ban them. The increase of short-term rentals has decreased the long-term rentals, increasing the price of rents in Simi Valley. That's a fact. So if you want to affect the rental prices, you ban short-term rentals, increase the number of long-term rentals, okay? You have an opportunity once again here to make a difference for our community. It's a rural community. Take advantage of this, and I urge you strongly, strongly, to ban short-term rentals and save our community. Do not destroy it. Thank you.
Two weeks ago, I was here advocating for my Hispanic friends and neighbors. Today, I'm here advocating for my black friends and neighbors. This is a constant issue, and we need to get ahead of it instead of reacting to it, right? We really want to get an agenda item for how we deal with ICE raids going forward, and we want justice for Mike, and that's it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, Council Members, staff, members of...
The blonde lady held it up. She's holding up a sign, I think about the police officers and how they're bad parents. So it's just about what happened with the violent incident. That's the sign she's holding up.
For the public, I'm Gabe Turan. I serve as the Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Oxnard, and I was here to talk to you about these things, but there is a lot of important things going on here tonight, and I sent the city clerk and the city manager an email, so I'll let those speak for itself. Just know that we banned these items, and I wanted to give you a heads up on that. But I can feel the hurt that's happening in this room and in this community, and I want to extend my heartfelt words of support for everybody who's in this room. They showed up tonight to show you, to demonstrate the harm and the hurt that this community is feeling by the actions of folks from within this community. And I bring that up because I'm sitting back there thinking how I'm going to talk about these things, but there are incredible issues that are happening in the city and your community right now, and there are many here who are feeling that this has been...
It's amazing. Here's a, someone who's serving in another town or city. He's got some type of agenda item he wants to speak about. I have no idea, because he's got these bottles up there. I have no idea what it's about, but he's obviously shelving it, and he's showing more compassion for the people there speaking than their own mayor. This guy is actually what a public servant should be. This guy's good.
Long, deep-seated issues that need to be addressed head-on, and as elected leaders, as an elected leader myself, we are charged with taking on those hard issues that our community members are saying need to be addressed and have followed for generations. All of us, myself included, we took an oath to defend the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of the United States of America, and that's against all threats, foreign and domestic. And when it's happening within our communities, if that's not a form of a domestic attack on our people and their rights, I don't know what is. And I just, I offer my support to all of you and to our community, to your community members and my Ventura County community members in this time, and there's a lot of harm and hurt going on across this nation. Let's deal with what we can within our communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers, please. Richard Perini, Jake, and Karen Troop.
Good evening, City Council. I wanted to first thank you for your service, and unfortunately, we had an ugly moment in our city, and thankfully, our community's speaking. I didn't come here to talk about this, but as many of the other speakers who came to say something that wasn't on this topic, it kind of moves you. Have a black nephew, a black... family members, and you look at this, and it scares you. It scares you to think that, what if he was going to the movies? And unfortunately, we see, we see the ugly, we see the parts on video, and I have faith in Chief Shorts and his department to find what's going on, and I think we just need to stay a little cool and let them do their research and let them prove to us the facts. And if they don't, that's a different story. But there needs to be transparency. We need to see what happened, and people do need to be held accountable. And I think that you being there patient and respectfully getting insulted is tough. And I know many of you, and I know you are not racist, and I know that you don't hate people in this community, and I know that you want to get to the bottom of this, as we all do, because I don't know anyone in this community, I personally don't know anyone in this community that would promote this and allow this, and so we're counting on you. Thank you.
A little too naive, I think, fortunately.
Is Jake here?
Think his heart's in the right place, though, and I think his tears were genuine.
Mayor Kavanaugh, City Manager, and Council Members, my name is Karen Troop, and I've been a resident, active volunteer, and business owner, excuse me, in Simi Valley since 1982.
Let's watch this lady. Since 1982, she's been a business owner in Simi Valley, and she is, this is the one... And she is, uh, this is the one I've been talking about. Wait till you see what she says. Wait till you see the response of the audience and the mayor here. This is a good one. She is a bizarre one. Wait till she, wait till she takes off the name tag. This lady is so full of privilege, she's never been checked in her life until this moment, I swear to God. It's like, lady, you don't have the privilege to take off your name tag and pretend you're somebody else. Like, this is just, the theatrics from this lady, that she thought this was going to work in this audience. Another one that needs to desperately read the friggin' room, lady. Wait till you see this lady. Watch this.
I am currently serving as the treasurer, CFO for the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I come to you this evening with that hat on. As a member of the chamber for nearly all of, oh, 40 years plus, actually, I've always appreciated the incredible partnership that the chamber and the city continue to share. The relationship is mutually beneficial in so many ways, many of whom were spoken to so eloquently by Paul Goodnow and Michelle Liddell. On behalf of the board of directors of the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce and all of its members, I thank you in advance for your continued investment in our community to once again approve the grant money that we have requested, or even more if you so desire. Thank you.
Like, like, wait, she just thanked them for the grant money, right? So she's gotten the grant money, and now she's, and she says, "And if you want to give us more, thank you so much, please give us more money." And now she's got to take off the pin that represents the business owner. This is a chamber of commerce. This is embarrassing.
I have, um, a quick half a minute, and I am intentionally showing that I am taking off my Chamber of Commerce badge and speaking to you as a mother and resident and active community person. I'm sorry for all the words that were spoken to all of you and to the police department this evening. I know that you did not wake up this morning and figure out how to purposely do a really bad job or upset people in our community. I trust that you are all doing the very best that you can. I--
Lady's trying to kiss ass to the city council. She just said, "I know you purposely didn't do a terrible job. I know you didn't do it on purpose." She, she's insulting the people she's trying to kiss the ass of, and she makes it worse for them. Watch this.
That we will see transparency. I don't support this kind of behavior, but please know that those children that were arrested do have parents. And it doesn't mean they're bad parents. I happen to know some of those parents, and they can't help that their 17-year-old children-- they can't help--
Please give--
Can't help it. They can't help it. These parents can't help, their 17-year-old children are, are violent criminals. They can't help it. I, is that really what you want to say in the city council when it happened two days ago? Are you, with all, a lot of the victims' friends and family there?
For the courtesy of being able to speak, thank you.
They can't help that their children made a very poor--
Look at the audience. The audience can't believe what she's saying right now.
You all interrupted her speaking. So now you expect me to cut off? I'm done, I'm done, I'm done. She gets an extra five seconds because you interrupted her. I did--
Look at this mayor. Look at this mayor really handling this well. Really, really professional mayor.
This last meeting also, and I will be as fair with all of you. So please give us the benefit of the doubt. Karen, you have five more seconds. Thank you.
It is like Jim McCave, isn't it?
If you cannot keep your voices down, you'll be asked to leave. Thank you. Karen, please--
If people can please have compassion for these families and what they're going through, and know that, and know that these parents did the best job they could, and--
Let's have compassion for the people that did the violence, their, their families. Let's have compassion for them. Didn't say any, let's have compassion for the person who got beat up, or all of the friends or all the people speaking tonight. Didn't have any compassion for them, but let's have compassion for the parents of the kids that did the violence.
Okay. The more you interrupt, if you cannot be quiet and act in a professional manner out in the di, out in the area, you'll be asked to leave. We have to have the time and the ability to hear what people say and to listen to them. So I would appreciate all of you giving her the same courtesy she gave each of you. So Karen, finish up in like two or three seconds, and we're done. Thank you. The rest of you, please? That's it.
These parents may have done a great job, and unfortunately, their children made a poor decision.
Okay, we're done. Thank you.
Unfortunately, they made a poor decision. Beating the crap out of somebody, throwing them in the dumpster, doing racial epithets, and then continuing even two days later to still be making the same type of threats in public. That is not a bad decision. That's, that's more than a bad decision. That's a failure of parenting. That's a kid that deserves, uh, some punishment. Bad decision. A bad decision is smoking a cigarette at 17. You know what I mean? A bad decision is skipping class. A bad decision is, um, what I did when I was in the Cub Scouts, when I went to the Navy mess hall. They took us to the Peas Air Force, oh, it was the Air Force Base, Air Force Base mess hall. They were like, "You're going to eat whatever you want." I was in the Cub Scouts. I didn't get anything nutritious, so I didn't get a salad or a sandwich. I got like six desserts. That was a bad decision. My parents were like, they heard about it, they were laughing. Like, the kid made a bad decision. He, he got six desserts. That's, that's a bad decision. Beating the crap out of somebody and calling them racial epithets and trying to throw them in a dumpster, a bunch of you, is not a bad decision. Not a bad decision. What a hack this lady is. Look at her. Look at the sun.
I've asked you to be quiet.
Covering her ears. That was a funny, did you see her cover her ears? Let's watch her walk away.
They can't help--
Please give her the courtesy of being able to speak. Thank you.
They can't help that their children made a very poor--
You all interrupted her speaking. So now you expect me to cut off? I'm done, I'm done, I'm done. She gets an extra five seconds because you interrupted her. I did this last meeting also, and I will be as fair with all of you. So please give us the benefit of the doubt. Karen, you have five more seconds. Thank you. If you cannot keep your voices down, you'll be asked to leave. Thank you. Karen, please--
If people can please have compassion for these families and what they're going through, and know that, and know that these parents did the best job they could, and--
Okay. The more you interrupt, if you cannot be quiet and act in a professional manner out in the di, out in the area, you'll be asked to leave. We have to have the time and the ability to hear what people say and to listen to them. So I would appreciate all of you giving her the same courtesy she gave each of you. So Karen, finish up in like two or three seconds, and we're done. Thank you. The rest of you, please? That's it.
These parents may have done a great job, and unfortunately, their children made a poor decision.
Okay, we're done. Thank you.
Decision, poor decision.
Thank you. I've asked you to be quiet.
So dramatic, man. Such a dr-- oh my God, oh my God.
I've been polite to you. This, this entire diocese has been polite to you. I expect you to be polite to us and respect that we are in a meeting and everyone has the equal right to speak. So we will now take our next, your turn will be up soon, I'm sure. All right? So we will now take our next three speakers. Thank you. Drew Hernandez, Ellen, and John Singer.
My name is Drew, and, listen, I don't, I don't, I haven't written anything down. This freestyle, this high shit, listen, listen. Hey, this shouldn't even be an argument, for real.
I gotta say, I gotta, I gotta go take on my dogs, apparently, and feed them. I haven't done that yet, even though I've been running around. Um, this is the kid. This is where it gets wild. Probably replay this, too. This is it. Check this out. Check this kid out. He's going to play the voicemail. This is the voicemail that we're probably going to play a couple times.
It really shouldn't, because we got Jonah Calado's son.
Gus, please, please, like your niggas--
We, we, hey--
Begging for a please, nigga. He's a mark-ass nigga on me, so just to let you know, Gus, ever try and threaten me again, nigga, I'll fucking murder you, nigga. You ain't gonna do a damn thing, cuz you ain't hardly got a bit.
Hey, Officer Calado--
Please give him--
Officer Calado. Hey, this your son, and this this morning. This is this morning.
Son who assaulted somebody, making more threats that morning, apparently, allegedly, according to this young man. Shocking. This is what they're dealing with.
This morning. This fucking morning.
Okay, the audience--
I just want to say, hey, I just want to say--
And no--
Ain't no skin color.
We don't allow curfew here, please, thank you.
This is all the, uh, city council and the mayor's concerned about the kid swearing, right? How much concern they have about this?
Ain't no skin color. We're human. Ain't no skin color. Fuck a skin color. Ain't no, ain't no--
I, I love that this kid, a kid, just blew all this shit up. A young kid. Now, I wish he wasn't swearing, honestly, but, because it does take away his message a little bit, but jeez, right? I mean, he blew up their shit. He blew it up.
Watch your language, please.
We're human. We're human. And that kid is a, he's a kid. And, and like they saying, if it was a black person, if it was black people jumping on a white person for doing nothing, saying, please, I'm saying, begging to run away, getting all beat on, what's going to happen? These people weren't arrested. SVPD lied to the public. SVPD lied to the public. These people weren't arrested? They turned themselves in. You want to know how I know? Because I got the attackers' information, right? They texting me. The attackers texted me. Hidden Davy, Nathan Elkins, Maddox Westfall, texting me. They turned themselves in yesterday. They turned themselves in, they got cited and released. They didn't get arrested like SVPD's saying? Why y'all lying to the public?
Please keep it quiet out there.
Turtle Boy in him, doesn't he? Yeah, he did, he brought the receipts. He brought the receipts. He blew their shit up, and he's got the, he's got the potty mouth, just like Turtle Boy. He's got a little Turtle Boy in him. This is, this is unbelievable.
Hey, I just want to say, if, if Simi Valley don't do us justice, then the streets is. And that's when, that's when shit going to get serious, right? Because then you're going to put this in cuffs, then we going to take accountability for all that shit, all that bullshit. So, listen, fuck a skin color and do the right thing.
No more curfew, please, thank you.
Yeah, that's good. That's good.
We have other, we have other speakers, please? The next speaker, please?
I gotta, I gotta say, too, like, uh, thank you for bringing that comment up. I gotta jump out real quick, we're going to continue to play this, but, uh, I'm glad you made that comment, you know, it's Modesto. They say, "Can you get him on your show?" I would love to get any of these kids, any of these speakers, anyone from Simi Valley that wants to speak up on this. I would love to have you live on my show. Hit me up on the Young Jerks on Twitter or Facebook if, uh, if you get the message. I would love to have you on this. That kid, I would love to have him on the show. Absolutely. If anyone knows him, please reach out and let him know. Show him this, let him know he's got an audience here, we want to hear from him.
Please be quiet out there, thank you. The next card just says Ellen. Is there an Ellen that submitted a card? The next speaker is John Singer.
First off, I had the pleasure of meeting Mike recently, and he was an extremely peaceful and just nice guy. So every time I see a video or post covering the topic, there's always people in the comments spouting ignorant shit, like, "He knew what he was doing, he was there to fight." That's what you get when you mess around. And these people completely and blissfully misinformed. It reflects the reality that some people will just agree and side with whatever reinforces their subconscious leanings. And this is truly a lack of mental discipline and a sort of personal enabling that allows for so much stupidity that leaches into other topics and areas of discussion, and these people go out and vote. And I don't want dummies in my community, goddammit. So let's work on that. Furthermore, I've thought out what I think might be a pretty good way for the community to actually get something out of this. I think it'd be a fantastic idea for the SVPD to reopen the files, label these as hate crimes as well as battery, and have them tried, with my suggestion being, there should be restraining orders enforced on behalf of the Regal Plaza Business Center for each of them, which they can do. I'd like to see their licenses revoked for two to three years each, community service for like 2,000 hours each, agreed-upon fines that go to agreed-upon charities, harsh counseling sessions till kingdom come, and probation for five years. So, that's just my suggestion. Now, I want to say in front of the council, I think it's really lame that every dying strip mall in Simi gets converted into like affordable housing tracts. We have a lot of money in the city treasury, and I think when we repossess lots from businesses, we should do a better job scanning the lists and many resources that show registered businesses looking to expand or open new commercial space, and we should select better ones to revitalize our town's economy and business presence and job creation, rather than trying to just bring more people in town. Like, imagine if you had a laser tag, or an indoor Topgolf, or a new skate park, or a microbrew, just something wicked for the community to enjoy and, uh, get out and contribute to the economy. So, that's all I got. Thanks, guys.
The next three speakers? Joshua Childers, Sarah Matusak, and Ruth Lovinos.
Hello, my name is Joshua Childers. I'm unfortunately an unhoused, tax-paying worker of a business of Simi Valley. I have been harassed by these juvenile thug criminals before. The cops did nothing. This group literally asked the guy, Jonah Calado, "Call your dad, call your dad." The cops came out, did nothing, had us sit on the floor and let them walk away, get in their cars and walk away. I relinquished my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please? Next speaker? Sarah? Oh, okay, thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Sarah Matusak. I am a lifelong resident. I am a mother of white children, and I would never, well, I would hope to God my kids would never say racist shit like was said, um, and a hate crime, be a part of a hate crime. But for those that were saying that the parents do the best they can, I'm going to read a message from Jonah's mom, because this is, this is a white mother defending her racist son, which means she is also racist. All I'm going, all I'm going to say to all of you who are blaming this on the parents, you have no idea what happened. These kids started it with our, our children. My child is far from racist. Okay, it's a different mother, it's a different racist child's mother. So, um, let's just say that when one of the kids had their mother say this, it is a parent defending their racist child. The, these children are protecting themselves from these kids coming into our town, causing trouble with other children who live here. So instead of just writing on what you see, listen to the whole picture. They are not racist. They are not fighters. They are defending themselves exactly the way they should be. That is racism. This city has been racist for decades. I remember as a child, when Rodney King was beaten, the, the trial was moved here because we knew that this city would defend the cops. This is classic white supremacy. And anybody who is not prioritizing this as a hate crime and justice for Michael is complicit in white supremacy. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Kavanaugh. I have three asks of you. The first one is to acknowledge this city's racist past. From, uh, the Judge Roy Bean Barr with the noose at the end of the counter, just catty corner from City Hall, to the '93 KKK rally permit given by Simi Valley Police Department so they could protect the KKK, to the Rodney King trial, to the 2018 attack on immigrants here in this council chambers, to the 20-- to the 2020 racist comments made by Councilmember Judge, to the 2020 Simi Valley Black Lives Matter March where I was the only elected official from Simi Valley to show up, to the weekly MAGA truck rallies, the Confederate flags. And I don't call it Regal Plaza. It is Confederate Plaza. I am tired of seeing the Confederate flags at that plaza, and I will not go to Regal, and I will not shop in that shopping center. And you're hurting business, you're hurting the economics of the city until you acknowledge that. That's my first ask. Acknowledge this city's racist past. I'm not blaming you all for every single thing, but acknowledge it. Number two, deal with the present corruption. Stop sharing and taking money from the Simi Valley Police Officers Association. You know who I'm talking about. They fund your campaigns, and then you luck the other way. When it comes to lawsuits, I'm tired as a taxpayer to paying for the corruption and all the things that happen. We're gonna pay for this as taxpayers. We, the taxpayers, pay for the corruption, and I'm tired of that. So stop sharing, stop taking money from the Simi Valley Police Officers Association for your campaigns. And yes, that is public knowledge. We will all look it up. And I want full, full cooperation with the DA. Full cooperation with the investigation. Don't hide stuff. Last but not least, hold yourselves and all taxpayer-funded Simi Valley employees accountable, and recuse yourselves if you took one penny of money from the SVPOA. Thank you.
May we have the next three council, please? Thank you.
Giovanna Pitts, William Roberts, and Isaac Rockmore and Latanda Cromedy. Cromedy.
I would love it. If they need any fundraising, I would definitely help out.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and community leaders. My name is Giovanna, and I stand before you as the president of the Black Student Union at Moore Park College. But more importantly, as a voice for young African-American people across this city and county who are hurting right now. On the night of August 1st, 2025, an 18-year-old African-American male, Michael Earl Robinson, was violently assaulted by a group of teenagers in the Regal Cinemas parking lot right here. I was appalled, and my team and I decided to come and speak today. This was a targeted racially motivated attack. Michael was chased from corner to corner, surrounded and hunted down by more than eight individuals. He had no choice but to defend himself with the only thing close to him, which was a chair. In a desperate attempt to survive, he was beaten to the ground. He suffered a chipped tooth, facial swelling, abrasions, even spinal injuries. He was called the N-word multiple times. And most, and the assailants called, um, joked about beating a black kid. This wasn't just violence, this was hate, and it didn't stop that night. Parents were on social media claiming that these children were protecting themselves from these kids coming into our town, the black kids coming into the town. Even being a police department's, um, the police officer's son, it's shaking our trust in the system that's supposed to protect us. Imagine being a young black person in Simi Valley. Imagine trying to go to the movies, trying to go to school, trying to go to the grocery store, and wondering if your life is even worth protecting here. Our focus should be on our education. It should be on growing. It should be on becoming better. So as a community, we're calling for a formal public acknowledgement from this city regarding the racial harm inflicted, a meeting with the African-American community to build the American dream, a transparent, independent investigation, protective and restorative measures for young African-American residents, and insurance that this soul, Michael, will not be harmed in this process.
Thank you. Your time is up. Does anyone else on this list? Then you can, she can now take over, if you like. That'll give you more time.
Hi, my name is Sky, and I just wanna say that Mike is my friend, and I've known him for so long. And the fact that somebody can do anything like this to him is crazy because he is one of the sweetest people I know. Me personally, walking to school, going to school, people have called me so many racial slurs, and just, just living and existing, I have been treated differently for so many times. Going anywhere I go, people are looking at me. I've been called the N-word by white people so many times, just because of my skin color. My friend Mike is, when I say he's one of the sweetest people I know, and for them to be threatening him and saying different things about him is not okay. And the fact that people are just sitting here, and there are people joining in and hitting him and touching him, is just not okay. And the fact, the police was there and seen this and did nothing about this is crazy.
That's all right. We're really only allowed to have you speak if you filled out a speaker's card, so.
Leave her. I'm gonna say, watch the videos, dude. You don't have to believe her. There's videos of what happened. I chose to not play them. You can find them. There's a reason why people are so upset about this. And from every account, this kid is the nicest kid. You could be, watch the video of him speaking too. He seems like a very nice young man. And I could see why the other kids would pick on him, because that's what they do. That's what bullies do, right? They always pick on the nice kids.
Yes, you did.
Okay. And which, give me your name so I can check it off.
Hello.
This is, is this Isaac Rockmore?
Yes.
And then we also have Latanda Cromedy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, um, my name is Isaac Rockmore. I'm also the Black Student Union Treasury President at Moore Park College. I wanna say, um, in 2022, I moved here thinking that Simi Valley was a safe place. Um, I didn't know that the happy face coming here on the freeway meant racist. And also, I have siblings that are also black, and I feel uncomfortable bringing them places out here. Also, I work in the town center, and I've seen it all, with the Trump flags everywhere. It's disgusting. It's very disgusting. I feel very unsafe now working out the town center because I'm seeing the slurs on the sign, the people that come in. It's just disgusting. And then as for my mother, that doesn't even live in this place, seen it. That's disturbing. Thank you.
Okay, then the next person's time, we'll start. Are you Laconda?
Latanda.
Latana, thank you.
I have a nine, a 10-year-old daughter now. She just turned 10 years old yesterday. Um, it's scary taking her out the house because she's always like, mommy, why did they say that to you? Or why did they do that to you? And I don't wanna raise her up in a home of like race, like this is because it's black, it's because of this. I don't, it's, it's, it's very hard to explain to her what's going on in the world without putting race into the equation. She's very impressionable. So when I go out and I maneuver in the world, it's like, okay babe, we have to do it this way. Why, mommy, why? Well, uh, it's, it's, it's just, it's just hard, cause I'm not one, I don't, I'm not, I don't wanna put race into anything, but however, nothing has changed in over.
Have you, do you have a speaker card filled out? We, we, we can't do that unless she fills out a speaker card, so she can, you can speak, and then she can fill it out right away. Okay?
Okay, I'll do that. Just. My name is Vanaria Jones. I live in the community. My daughter's one that just spoke. Um, I have two of them. At the end of the day, we've been in the, the Simi Valley Community Town Center on multiple occasions and seen these same teens loitering. Loitering to the point where it makes my daughters feel unsafe. This is a problem like this, like, like many have said previously before me, it's deep-seated and rooted. This is a, this is a problem that Mike, I mean, we've heard on a number of occasions that Mike doesn't live in the community. We go to church in this community. Mike goes to church in this community. That is where my daughters and a lot of the community in here knows Mike from.
Hey, I do have to stop now. The time is up. But thank you. If there's anyone else that has filled out a card.
With the eight seconds that are left, 10, well, it was, there was eight seconds when I turned to look. So can ma'am please have my eight seconds?
The red light was on, so I go by the red light. I'm sorry. So. One that's up here. If we have a speaker card for you, you may stay up here. Would the rest of you like to sit down, please? Or you can just stand behind the one person who has a speaker card.
Sorry, he has one.
Okay, so this gentleman.
This lady can't control her police force, but she can control every single speaker there. It's unbelievable.
Two minutes now, too. All right. And I do thank you all for being very respectful. I appreciate that.
Unlike you.
Change.
Okay.
Um, I'm Devon Ware. I live in Simi Valley. I've lived here my whole life. Um, ever since a young age, I've had to deal with racism in this community, ever since kindergarten. I've had, I've had people tell me to get to the back of the line because of the color of my skin. I cannot stand for that any longer. Mike, Michael Robinson, one of the sweetest kids I know. When he moved out here from Texas, he started playing football with all of us. Sweetest kid out there. And for them to diminish his characters, it sickens, it, it really sickens me. My grandmother, she was in the same room many, many years ago, fighting because she was fighting for the Rodney King trial, right? Now I'm here fighting for Michael Robinson. Michael Robinson's an amazing human being, and he needs justice. He needs justice. The color of my skin should not put a target on my back. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming tonight. Do we have any other speakers? Um, the last speaker is William Roberts.
This woman sucks. This mayor is not good.
Hi there.
Wants to speak on this.
Mayor, city council. Um, just for, I think that woman left, but I just wanna say, uh, tho, those, these kids, they're not, they didn't make a bad decision. This is a product of bad households. This has probably been ongoing, as we can hear from all the, all the, uh, you know, personal testimony from other people. And their confidence is a system of, is a symptom of the time that we live in. Uh, culture in America right now is emboldening people to act on the racism that has been festering at home. Unfortunately, one of the racist households involved in this incident has a cop in it. I'm not sure about you, but I don't like racist cops in my town. I've lived here for 38 years. I don't, and I'm, yeah, I've definitely experienced like the racism, like I hear it like going around, like since I've grown up, since like the, the 90s and 80s. Like, and it's unacceptable. And in this time and age, like, yeah, like, we have like races being emboldened like throughout the nation, but this is our time to stand up and say like, no, we're not dealing
Great final speaker to end it tonight. He's, he's on mark. Uh, Poetic Justice, you've made a lot of great comments tonight. I wanna thank you. Uh, this is so on point. And this is what a good leader would do. I've seen this a lot, actually. From good leadership, where this is exactly what this mayor should be doing, and they're not, they're missing an oppo, this is the truly missed opportunity is this mayor and city councilor not embracing these young people. Poetic Justice says the mayor should capitalize and take advantage of the energy from these young people. But instead, she's, she's hiring them along, making them jump through hoops. Ridiculous. That's the real missed opportunity tonight. Yeah, really seems like, uh, it's protect, protect your friend mode. That's what it really seems like with this mayor. Again, if anybody knows anyone from Simi Valley that wants to come on the show and speak on this, especially any of these speakers that showed up to the city council, any of these young people, I'd love to have them on the show. If you know any of them, let them know. Hit me up, Young Jerks, J U R K S is how we spell jerks on Twitter or Facebook. Send us a instant message there, direct message.
This crap. This isn't happening in our town, so this is our time to do that. Uh, so maybe it's standard procedure to kinda sweep the stuff under the rug. Maybe the only reason that we know about this is because it was filmed and put up and posted online. But I wanted to make you all aware that this is starting to be picked up by major news sources in LA, and it could, could become a national story as we get more and more info that comes out. So.
Look at me, I'm covering it in Massachusetts, so obviously it's gotten some places. Hopefully it goes to more places. This needs a lot of coverage. This city seems like it's very screwed up.
I just wanna let everybody know, you, the mayor, you know, mayor, city council, DA, SVPD, how this investigation is conducted will reflect strongly on how the city of this people and the people hired to police it are, let me say that again, how this investigation is conducted will reflect strongly on our city and the people hired to police it. So, to all of you, should we allow violence, blatant racism to be emboldened in Simi, or should we stamp it up and make an example of a very clear example of a hate crime? Thank you. Nazi lives don't matter.
The mayor seems to be keeping up with the Kenone vibes, I know, right?
We have one last speaker card.
Oh, there's another speaker. Okay, there is one more. Are they coming up?
Chavis Carpenter?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Chavis Carpenter. I've been a resident, uh, in Simi Valley since 2008. Um, I'm not from Simi Valley originally. I grew up in the city, uh, moving out here. Um, and I'll go really quick into a story about my daughter. So, I, I'm not racist, never really experienced racism until I moved to Simi Valley. Um, I grew up where it was basically, you know, you're a good person or you're a bad person. And so moving here to Simi Valley, when I first moved here, I was pulled over frequently, getting off work, slacks, dress shirt, because my taillight was out, but it wasn't out. Um, various things that, you know, just, um, just to pull me over. Now, I'm gonna fast forward really quick to a story about my daughter. So, I've been out here.
That's an interesting statement right there. He, this, this, this man is obviously a black male. He said he never experienced any racism until he moved to Simi Valley. That's telling. I think that is telling, and then they were pulling him over.
Yeah, my daughter's 16 years old now, just about, about to turn 16. And in elementary, in the fifth grade, she was accosted by a group of about 10 white girls at Garden Grove Elementary. Uh, should be documented. Um, I probably could have sued the city of Simi Valley and the Simi Valley Unified School District at that time for negligence. Because I went after the school board, I sent emails, I reached out to the school to find out what was going on, they swept it under the rug. They swept it under the rug. My daughter was jumped by 10 white girls. It should be documented. So I went up to the school because I handle things a little bit differently. So I went up and I, I, I saw the parents at graduation, sixth grade graduation. They didn't want any issues. So they pointed me to a parent that lived in a different area. I just so happened to run into that parent at the North Ridge Mall. So when I approached that parent and I said, we have a real issue, your daughter was one of the, the girls that jumped my daughter on that campus. He pointed back to the other parents saying that, you know, they live in Simi, they're racist, they're meth heads. I believe it, because we have plenty of that, plenty out here. And so, my, my point to that is not to be funny, this, that, and the other, but we have a community, a long living history of people in Simi Valley being racist. And then I'm talking about on all levels. I'm talking about the lowest of the low and those that think they're the highest of the high.
Sir, your time is now up, but thank you. Appreciate it.
The same, uh, above as below. Seems like the big issue here in this town.
Public speaking cards should have been filled out prior to the start of public speaking. We've allowed quite a few. Do you, what do you have? No, I'm, I'm speaking to the clerk. I'm sorry.
Speak, how dare they? How, how dare they, mayor? How more people wanna speak?
Okay, we are, we won't accept any more cards. This is it, but we will allow these to speak. Thank you.
Cheryl Courtney?
We got a couple more. I thought we were done, but we're not done.
Good evening, city, city council. My name is Cheryl Courtney. I've lived in Simi Valley.
One more moment. I, I definitely wanna, uh, check on the dog I got down here. Oh, he's behind me. Good. He's doing good. I let another, I, I fed him down here. We, we got multiple dogs here today. We got some visitors, so it's been kind of a little work, making sure all the dogs are good. Paul, Paul, uh, Paul Y. sent $5 on Venmo. He says, keep up the good work, Mike. Thank you so much, Paul. I really appreciate the, uh, Venmo donation tonight. All right, uh, gonna play, I guess, I think, I wonder if this is the last speaker. It might be. We'll see. We, we're gonna finish this. We're not gonna cut anyone off. We're gonna make sure we play every, every speaker tonight. Cause this city council hearing was lit.
For 40 years, I've raised two sons here. One, uh, is a, a Army JAG captain, so I'm very proud of both of my boys. Um, my, my, they're young men. They're young men. And I do think that it is parenting that influences how they're raised. And I would also say that I want to compliment and commend the bravery of the
We actually have a couple of visitors here tonight. So we have Charlie, who's our little guy, our little crazy guy. And then we also have Riley who's staying here. He's, he's, it's funny because Riley used to have a sister, but his sister passed away. She was older, older dog. So now Riley's here, he's upstairs with Charlie. And I have Aya down here, who's the big girl, the big sweet girl. She was crying. Apparently she was crying upstairs because she wanted to be with me. So now Aya is down here with me. So we, we have a full house. We have three dogs here. Two of them are visitors. One is a female, Aya, and she's sitting crouched behind me. Every time I see her name, she's looking up at me. She wants to go play. So let's, we're going to get through this so we can go play with Aya.
Young people that are here that stood up tonight. And while many, much of what was said was full of passion. And I understand that, you know, justice, my son is, you know, a JAG attorney. I understand that justice is going to reflect in the days that happened after this incident. But I hope what you hear is the passion and the, and the energy that is compelling people to come out and speak. And what I see before you is an opportunity. What I see before this council is an opportunity. What I see before the, the police force is an opportunity to make a significant change in Simi Valley. So that people feel welcome here, that they feel safe here, and that they feel that there's equity amongst all of the resources that all of us pay for as taxpayers. It broke my heart to hear the homeless people talk about how that they've, they have experienced different levels of policing. And I'm not, I'm a police supporter. But, but I, I cannot, I would not say that what they've said is in any way false. So we have an opportunity here to make a change. And I hope that what you hear, that you take it to heart. And I truly hope that what you'll have, and I would ask the council to make your comments and have transparency. Because I plan to be back here and I want to hear what is happening. Because people deserve to live where there is freedom, there is protection, and that they have peace of mind where they are. This is so disturbing to me, I can't even tell you. So again, I want to just speak in support of the young people who are here today.
All right, thank you.
Support the young people. Yeah, Charlie, people asking
The last speaker is Raina Young.
People are asking to see Charlie tonight. He's upstairs. Next time I'll, he's been on the camera a few times. I pull him up and he usually gives a little growl. He's trying to get the treats on the table. He's fun. I'll bring him down next time. He's a little crazy man.
Thank you for accepting my card. My name is Raina Young, but I go by Raina Day. I'm in ministry. I have a Sirius XM morning show where we play gospel hip hop music. And Mike Robinson has actually been on my show because he has fought very hard to move away from Texas and change his life and give his life to the Lord. I trust him with my children who are young. He has helped me around my house. He has always called me Miss Raina. And I just want to thank the chief for allowing me to help me to speak to you because I want to speak about Mike's character. Mike loves God and he loves everyone he comes in contact with. He's not a gang banger. And when I called him, when I found out what happened, I said, what happened? Did you get in an argument with them? His words were me, to me were, no, Miss Raina, they were drunk. They were looking for a fight. They turned the corner, they came back. And when they came back around, I said, we better get out of here, which shows he utilized wisdom. He said they chased him. So I have an issue, a couple of issues with this as I've found out since then, that these kids have been terrorizing many races and ages of people. I have an issue with them underage drinking. I feel like that's a huge problem that yes, their parents probably do know about. Cause I know about my children and what they're getting into. If you're paying attention, which you should be, all the parents in here. And it seems that they have no remorse. And I was crying in here because to know that this morning that that young man said that he would murder my nephew. He's like my nephew. Hearing that is not okay. Shows there's no remorse. So I pray to God that we don't repeat what happened with Rodney King. I pray to God, the only one who's in charge of all of this, that you all will make sure that you stand against what happened on Friday night. As he left church, he got beat up that night.
Thank you.
Glad she spoke to the camera. That was a good. Wow. Good ending. Somebody knows Mike. Justice for Michael, all right?
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, next on the agenda is City Council comments regarding public statements.
Now they're just moving on? No, they're actually going to make some statements.
Councilmember Judge, or excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Judge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and expressing all these stories to us. It was very eye opening. And you can trust that I'm going to make sure the police department, excuse me, follows up on this with their investigation and the evidence. And that evidence is turned over completely to the district attorney for the prosecution that will warrant what evidence and the investigation brings. I believe every member on this council feels the same way. Nothing is going to be covered up. Nothing is going to be swept under the rug. You will be aware through nixols and other things about the case, the progress of this case. Thank you for all coming out.
Councilmember Ayala.
Thank you, everyone, for coming to speak. One of the speakers said that hate does not have any place in our city. Another one said that action should have consequences. And I want you to know that I completely agree with those two statements. I also want you to understand that when Mayor Pro Tem Judge in his statements said that he's advocating for a transparent process, that you can believe him because I'm, because I'm also doing the same thing. Okay, I'm also behind the scenes every day, making sure that the investigation continues in a way that it needs to happen. One of the speakers said that the investigation is currently being conducted and we need to watch that play out. And that's what we have to do. It's been three days. I know we want instant gratification, but the only way that it works correctly is if we allow everything to play out. And then we can come back once that decision is made. But let's let it play out. Let's see what happens. And just understand that I support all of you coming out tonight regardless of what you said. And as I always say, my door is always open to anyone who wants to come and speak. So thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for your passion and have a good night.
In fact, City Council seems he's like he's very serious about it, which is good. Some breaking news, breaking news about Karen Reed, apparently. Wow, look at this. Well, actually it's more about Norfolk County. Thank you, KLM, for letting me know. Thank you for the super chat too. $10 donation says, Mike, did you see the judge ordered 4,100 pages of Morrissey work and personal emails released? Apparently NBC Boston has 4,100 pages of Michael Morrissey's emails. We'll see how many are redacted. I, I saw something about redactions too. So hopefully not too much is redacted. I want to know what he said about us. I want to know if he's talking about Eden, if he's talking about the Young Jerks. This is going to be wild. It'll be interesting to see. I'll be watching NBC Boston, breaking news. We'll be definitely looking into that. This is, this is breaking news. Thank you, KLM. It's never going to end, the Karen Reed. Never going to end.
Councilmember Lister?
This one is really hard to comment on because it is so painful for everyone here. And the reality is, is that we all want, I believe, love, acceptance, kindness to everyone, period. I, I just think that that is, I concur with the statement that racism is never acceptable. Never, never. You know, I have to be honest, it's a little difficult for me. As a child, I grew up in Hawaii. I was the minority. I was the hawley. I was the one that sometimes ran home from school. And so, but at the same time, I just learned to love everyone. Didn't matter what you looked like, what you did, et cetera. That was just who you are. I'm also blessed with two amazing black grandkids. I have my daughter, white, married up, wonderful man from Ghana. No question, she married up. And I recognize that she on occasion has expressed her worries for her children. And so I'm very, very aware. It should never have to be, never. And I will say that Michael sounds like an outstanding young man. Thank you for helping us to get to know him. Appreciate that. At the very least, this was extreme bullying and clearly it needs to go through. It just needs to be, it needs to stop and it needs to go through the proper legal channels. I recognize we're talking about juveniles, which is a different standard, but it doesn't mean punishment doesn't occur. Doesn't mean there aren't consequences. There are all sorts of consequences that are appropriate. And I heard a few being suggested tonight. But most importantly, as Mayor Pro Tem Judge and Councilmember Ayala said, it needs to go through the system. And I know, I have appreciated the updates from police we've received and know that they will actively continue and will work with the DA. And anyway, thank you all that, that were here. I, I appreciate the passion in this room and, and thank you everyone for being part of making our community better.
Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a different lived experience than those that spoke. If I went back in my genealogy, I couldn't actually tell you where I'm from, what my ethnic background is. I'm a mutt. And people can call me all sorts of names and I'll go, okay, because I don't know. I can't put myself in the pain that you've been feeling in your lives. And the only thing that I can relate to is through others' speeches and feelings. Will tell you that my, both of my brothers have married into Hispanic families. And I've been hearing from one of my brothers that his daughters who live in this community are concerned about the ICE rage and concerned about the different things that are happening and going on and what their limited experience is. I don't have it myself, but it's close. In this instance, for this matter, I have complete faith in our system. You know that the DA is not a city function, is a county function. But I have complete faith in the system that we were going to discover what has gone on. We are going to be able to prosecute what has gone on. And as Councilmember Ayala said, we have to give it a moment. We have to let it play out. And we have to respect the fact that these are juveniles and you're not going to get all of the transparency that you want due to the juvenile nature until it's over. And so thank you for coming out. Thank you for sharing with me. Some of the stories that I heard were disturbing and eye opening, both. So thank you very much.
Thank you. This is such a hard thing to sit here and listen to all your story, not your stories, listen to your truths and understand that this is happening in the community that I love, that I grew up in, that I raised my daughter and that my grandkids are growing up in. So we do need to do better. We do need to find a way to fix it. We do need to find a way to move on. And I would love to meet with the Moore Park College group that was here. I would love to meet with you guys and share, you could share your stories with me and at least help me find ways that we can make Simi Valley a better place for everybody. All right? I think that's probably the best way, place to start.
There's two Simi groups here as well. There's two Simi groups here.
Okay, I'm more than happy to meet with them also. We can make arrangements. Don't forget, this is a part-time job. I have a real job that pays my mortgage. But I would love to meet I'm sorry. Thank you. But I really, it was heartbreaking to watch the videos in the first place. It gave me the chills and to think that this is happening in the community I live in. And then to meet individuals who have, this is personally affected. And to have our young people speak up is really, really heartening to me. That means people care. They want things to get better. They're willing to work to help us do that. Because all of us, I think, can improve in our daily life and everything we do. I teared up a little bit reading our, reading my first statement because this is very, very important to all of us as people. We are all human. We all deserve the same rights. We all deserve the same courtesies. We all deserve the same ability to walk someplace and be safe and not feel unsafe at all. And so I think we need to take those steps to further that. And I don't know what all of those steps are, but I'm willing to work on them. And I'm willing to help this community get to a place where we're all happy and we're all proud to live here. So thank you.
I think you get what you pay for. Doesn't seem like they pay her a lot.
Just as a reminder, we're not allowed to really do complete discussions back and forth on items unless they're on the agenda. But we were able to share our thoughts and our feelings and our thanks for all of you for being out here tonight.
Yeah, what is a real job? All right, we're going to move on now.
Next on the agenda?
Next on the agenda. Let's move on, people. Let's, they just took a 10 minute break. That's what they did. They took a 10 minute break. They did too much work. Let's take a 10 minute break now. And I've taken a lot of 10 minute breaks tonight to myself, but yeah, I'm not sure where I'm doing my next show. I've been kind of keeping it, you know, keeping it loose. We'll see what happens. I'm definitely going to be reaching out to Beddero again. We'll probably get him back on the show to talk about some things. There's going to be some hearings this upcoming week. I'm probably going to take it easy this weekend. We'll see. I'm kind of enjoying my time off, but I felt like I want to do this today just because of Tompkins, the sheriff of Suffolk County getting busted. And this, this hearing that I came across in Simi Valley. If anybody knows anybody in Simi Valley, especially any of these young people that spoke, they want to be a guest on the show to talk about more about this, I'd love to have them on. Reach out to them, let them know. I want to thank everybody who sent, you know, super chats tonight. We had Sarah, Laura, KLM, Poetic Justice, and also the Venmo tonight. I want to thank you for donating to the show. I want to thank everyone who's subscribing. If you haven't, please like and subscribe. You know what I'm going to do is I'm going to go back that we, I was on the Grace Curly Show earlier today. And it's like 10 minutes. I'm just going to replay. I posted it up on YouTube today. You can watch it on YouTube. It's also available on podcast form on the Grace Curly Show iTunes. It's all found on the Howie Carr Radio Network. You can find their iTunes. You can also listen to all the interviews that I do on the Grace Curly Show there as well. But I figured I'd just play it.
Read Grace's work in The Spectator and see her recommended reading.
This is my interview earlier today on the Grace Curly Show.
She's a nasty woman. She's a really nasty woman.
Now here's the millennial with the mic.
Grace Curly.
Grace Curly.
Grace Curly.
Grace Curly.
Grace Curly, host of the Grace Curly Show.
Grace Curly.
Welcome back everyone to the Grace Curly Show. It is Friday and it is 1:05. And you know what that means? That means we get to talk to Mike Crawford from the Young Jerks becoming, quickly becoming a fan favorite. And he's able to keep up with everything that's going on here in the crazy state of Massachusetts. There is never a slow news day. And I do mean that literally, like every single day, there's six or seven stories I could talk to Mike about. I want to start today, Mike, and I'm going to kind of give you the floor here. Because what a lot of people don't know is before Karen Reed and before you really dug into that story, you oftentimes would talk about Boston and the cannabis industry. And so it's kind of the perfect merger here of several different things that you know a lot about. The Suffolk Sheriff Stephen Tompkins was federally charged this morning while he was in Florida. He was arrested this morning in Florida for extorting, allegedly extorting a pot company here in Boston, a Boston cannabis company. Tell us the details about this story and fill us in on, on what's happening here.
Allegedly Sheriff Tompkins is not the smartest or best investor, that is for sure. He, he basically broke even on this investment. He actually lost money, but he extorted it to a break even. It's just shocking that he would make such a stupid, stupid choice here. He basically took $50,000, asked this dispensary group that he had been working with through the sheriff's office. that he had been working with through the sheriff's office, uh, and he basically extorted them to, to go in the IPO, the initial public offering, which seemed like a good deal for him, he was making good money, and then the stock crashed, and when the stock crashed, he went back to the cannabis company that he had leverage over, due to his, you know, due to the sheriff's office, because they had a deal with the sheriff's office, part of their equity plan with the state of Massachusetts, it's part of the licensing requirement that these dispensary groups give back, and their giving back was, uh, was a deal with the sheriff's office, that they would help, uh, give people job training, and help people, you know, reform, you know, convicts from the prison, so he used that to basically extort this company allegedly twice, and it's like the worst investment ever, it's like, dude, you're a fool, like, most people over the last five years invested in, uh, NASDAQ 100 and made a killing legally, you didn't need to do that, you lost money, and you looked like a poor investor, it's just like, all that for a loss, basically, it's unbelievable that he would give up his job, his reputation, and it just shows what's been going on in the cannabis industry, and why, I covered it for so much, is the corruption, I, I was all about cannabis, you know, rights and patients and reform and passing law, and then what I saw with these big corporations and a lot of, uh, public officials at the trial fair, it's, it's really kinda gross, and, and the consumers and patients and the workers especially got the shaft here.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned his job, Mike, because the Boston Herald's, uh, Flint McGonigal wrote, Tompkins was appointed sheriff in 2013 by then Governor Deval Patrick to replace, uh, Andrea Cabral, Tompkins won a special election the following year, and has won multiple six-year terms since, he earned a total of two hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and thirty thousand, uh, or two hundred and fifteen, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars with a one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar base pay in 2024, so he was making good money to begin with.
It's unbelievable, and then you take fifty thousand dollars that you had, and you invested it in this, cause you thought you would make a killing, uh, kinda, kind of in a shady way, using, you know, to get in on their IPO, and then you lost, and you lost, cause it, it was actually a foolish investment, and he should have just taken his money, like I said, and, and put it into Nvidia, and Facebook, and Google, like everybody else did, and made a lot of money. Instead, he got greedy and lost, it's hilarious, it's like karma, and now, he lost that big job, I, I guarantee, I mean, I don't know how that's gonna go, I don't know how long he can stay in office, that's the question, when's he resigning?
Yeah, um, I, I won't hold my breath on the resignation, but I, I would ask, Mike, you know, they, they're using words like extort and bully, do we know any details as to how he did that?
Well, it's obvious in this, they didn't name the dispensary company, it's obvious to me who it is, it's obviously Ascend Cannabis, which, funny enough, the CEO was Andrea Cabral, a former sheriff as well, uh, I don't know if she's still the CEO, but it seems like the dispensary company blew the whistle, and I think that's why the feds have, uh, protected the identity of the dispenser group, but I think if you read between the lines, it's, it's obvious it's Ascend, uh, they did an IPO, so, uh, you know, it, it's very interesting, it definitely came from Ascend, and you, you feel like they got the goods if it came from Ascend, they, they, they told on them.
Um, Mike, I want to switch gears here, and, uh, I didn't give you a heads up on this, so forgive me if this is not in your realm of expertise, but I, I think it's a story you've probably been following. Have you been following the story about the Massachusetts State Auditor, and how she's now hired an outside law firm to sue the legislator over failure to comply with the ballot measure? I was on the beach this weekend, and a friend of mine was livid over this, and he was livid at me, he said, you haven't been talking about this at all, you haven't, you haven't even made a comment about it, and I thought, you know what, that would be a good chance to give Mike the, the microphone, and talk a little bit about the hiring of this outside law firm, and, and you know, Massachusetts voters approve the ballot question, I think this is something we see a lot in Massachusetts, where people approve something, or they vote for something, and just because people overwhelmingly support something, doesn't mean it actually ever happens, so talk to us about this.
I'm glad you brought this up, cause I have had Diana DiZoglio on my show several times, but I haven't covered in a while, people are actually saying the same thing to me, and, uh, I love what she said, she called it, uh, the math legislature, an authoritarian regime, and it's so funny how all the Democrats are always pointing at Washington DC, but in the Bay State, it's not looking too good, and I love Diana DiZoglio, that she's not giving up, she took a little break, she got an attorney, the AG is bucking her, it's, it's ridiculous what's going on, because the majority, a large majority, more than any other elected official voted yes for this, and it's independents, it's Democrats, it's Republicans, it's everybody in the state, and I'm wondering, is she gonna run for governor? I think she should, cause she's a breath of fresh air, I'm, I'm, I just hope it gets through, it's, it's really kinda sick that we can't even get a lawyer for this, they won't even allow it to be heard, that's, that's how bad the state is.
Yeah, a, and just to, to add to your point about how people overwhelmingly voted for this, it was seventy-two percent, so this wasn't something where it was close, I know sometimes the public officials use that as the excuse, like, oh, well, we, we have to do a redo, or you know, we'll vote again, but this was an overwhelming majority of the Commonwealth asking for this audit, what is the reasoning, I, I know they're saying it violates the state constitution separation of powers, um, so we're not allowed to see where our money's going, is, is that how I'm reading this?
That's exactly it, that, that, it's funny how you could rule that after the fact, because the AG is supposed to, in, in any ballot initiative, the first, one of the first steps in the process besides gathering the signatures, is the AG reviews the language, and determines whether that language is constitutional, if it's not, then it's not allowed on the ballot. So the AG ruled it was constitutional then, but not now, that's, it's very interesting how they want to interpret it, but they won't even let Diana DiZoglio, who, uh, led this initiative, who is the state auditor, who does want to do this, they won't even let her get an attorney, to kinda suss it out, and, 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 you know, see if, if, let's find out, Diana DiZoglio wants to take it to the courts, they say it's not legal, let's find out.
I cannot imagine the level of waste, fraud, and abuse that is happening if this is the stonewalling-
Yeah.
-that's going on.
Yeah, and that's the issue, I mean, you can call the constitutionality of it all you want, but that doesn't negate the real issue, there's no transparency at the State House, they don't even, they just started telling us for the first time, like, how committee members vote, that doesn't happen in other states, they don't have any FOIA laws at the State House, or with the governor, that doesn't happen in Florida, they call the red states all regressive, but you know what, we're more regressive at our State House than any other state, so let's be real.
Yeah, I, I want to switch gears here, you just mentioned FOIA, and this actually sparked, uh, something in my mind that I want to get to, there was an anonymous out-of-state attorney who filed a FOIA request, and it was a four-hundred-page lawsuit against the Mass DOT for refusing to produce any public records related to Karen Reed, um, that this person requested over the past five months. What do we know about this? Um, I know this person is staying anonymous, but again, we're, we're talking about a lack of transparency, a lack of accessibility, and that definitely played a huge role in the Karen Reed case.
Yeah, absolutely, I don't know too much about this, but I do know who the attorney is, she's a, you know, a, she is a legitimate attorney out of state, I'm not sure if she still wants to be anonymous, she has been, so I'm gonna keep that right now, but she filed that, and, uh, it seems like she got a lot of documents, and looks like she's looking to share it with some of us, she's been posting it on Twitter, she posted one screen capture that was very interesting, it was a picture of, uh, Detective Sergeant, whatever we call him, Buchanan, and he basically was doing, uh, the whole reenactment, you know, the Smurf reenactment with the taillight, and it happened with Trooper Paul, it's funny how they used Trooper Paul, Trial One, uh, he went bad, but they still did this reenactment with him between Trial One and Two, but they didn't use it, and then they brought in Welter, who did the same exact reenactment that Buchanan is doing with the arm and the taillight, so it's wild to see more documentation coming out, and knowing that there's more, and the story's not gonna end, we, we keep finding out more and more about how much money and time and just ridiculousness was wasted on the Karen Reed, the two trials here.
Absolutely, Mike Crawford from the Young Jerks, everyone follow Mike on social media, on X, it's at the Young Jerks, it's J U R K S, there you can get links to his YouTube, and really to all of his different outlets that he utilizes that people really enjoy, so make sure you follow him there, we'll talk to you again, Mike, next week, and this podcast, if you want to share it with anyone who's very intrigued with what's going on with that state audit.